Good evening and welcome to the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, Twalton City Council Meeting. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Leans led by Council Brooks tonight. That brings us to announcements. Our first announcement is a proclamation recognizing November twenty twenty-three as Native American Heritage Month, and this will be read by Council Brooks.
Thank you. Proclamation recognizing Native American Heritage Month. Whereas the history and culture of our nation has been significantly influenced by Native Americans and indigenous peoples. And whereas the city of Twalton recognizes the unique and enduring relationship that exists between indigenous peoples and their traditional territories in the area currently known as Washington County. Oregon rests on land that was first inhabited by the Apelotti Kalapulian, also called the Twalton people, who flourished here for thousands of years. And whereas Oregon is home to nine federally recognized tribal nations, including the Burns-Powathee, the Confederated Tribes of Kuz, Lower Umquah, and Susla Indians, Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron, Confederated Tribes of Stolletts, Confederated Tribes of Umatilla Reservation, Confederated Tribes of Warm Springs, Cow Creek Band, and Umquah, of Umquah Indians, Kokil Indian Tribe, and the Klamath Tribes. And whereas equity is a priority for the city of Twalton in ensuring that Native Americans are front and center in our efforts to improve opportunities and outcomes for Native American families, communities, businesses. And whereas meaningful engagement centers the lived experience of Native Americans in Oregon so as to provide equitable access to the city's services and development, infrastructure and program investments. And whereas the city of Twalton is committed to engaging with tribal nations and tribal communities to build relationships and address issues affecting their well-being. And whereas during the month of November, we honor the native peoples in this, their ancestral homes, and recognize their continued contribution to all areas of community and family life, arts, and culture. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Twalton, Oregon, that November twenty twenty-three is Native American Heritage Month. Introduced and adopted this thirteenth day of November twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Item number two under announcements is a proclamation declaring November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three as Small Business Saturday, and this one will be read by Council President Pratt. And then we have a representative from the Twalton Chamber of Commerce who would like to make some comments afterwards.
Okay, proclamation declaring November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three is Small Business Saturday. Whereas the city of Twalton, Oregon celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are thirty-three point two million small businesses in the United States. Small businesses represent ninety-nine point seven percent of firms with paid employees. Small businesses are responsible for sixty-two point seven percent of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five, and small businesses employ forty-six point four percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas sixty-eight cents of every dollar spent at a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at a small business creates an additional forty-eight cents in the local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas seventy-five percent of consumers reported that Small Business Saturday twenty twenty-two made them want to shop and dine at small, independently owned retailers and restaurants all year long. And whereas Twalton strongly supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Twalton, Oregon, that November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three is Small Business Saturday, and urge the residents of Twalton to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Introduced and adopt this thirteenth day of November twenty twenty-three.
Susan, come on up. Please introduce yourself, not that we don't know who you are, but for the TV viewing audience.
I got it. I'm challenged. Good evening. I'm mayor and council. I'm Susan Noack. I'm on the Board of Directors for the Twalton Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here to represent the chamber tonight to say thank you to the city, not only for this proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which is extremely important to our community and our businesses, but to thank you for our partnership that we have with the city and have for years and how strong it is, and how much you do support the community, the business community in Twalton. If our community isn't aware of that, they need to know how strong this commitment is from the city and the chamber to support our businesses. So thank you very much, and thank you for the proclamation.
Thanks, Susan. That brings us to item three, new employee introduction Bryce McKenna, our new maintenance services manager. Come on up with Rachel.
All right, this is the first one of these I have had the pleasure of doing since I've worked here, so hi. Mayor Bubinik, members of city council. I'm Rachel Sykes. I'm the Public Works Director here in Twalton, and it is my pleasure to introduce you to the newest member of the Public Works Department, Bryce McKenna. Bryce is our new Fleet and Facilities Manager, and he started here in Twalton on October ninth. Bryce comes to us after working for the state of Oregon for over twenty years in a variety of roles with the Department of Human Services, the Department of Revenue, and most recently Oregon Housing and Community Services. Bryce brings skills in project management, strategic planning, process improvement, grant administration, many more that I could go on. And he's got a number of years of managerial experience as well. As our Fleet and Facilities Manager, Bryce will be tasked with managing all of Twalton's facilities, maintaining our fleet, and a variety of other duties that falls under the Maintenance Services Division. This includes managing a number of capital projects, thinking strategically about preventative maintenance and how we prolong the life of our assets, and providing a high level of customer service to all city employees because the Maintenance Services Division provides a really high level of internal customer service, which is something that oftentimes is not seen. We're very fortunate to have Bryce on our team, and I know you will join me in welcoming him to the city of Twalton. Thank you.
Bryce, welcome.
Thank you.
Anything you'd like to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that it's been a fantastic experience so far. It's just been a month. But having spent the entirety of my professional career prior to coming to Twalton in state government, I was a little curious about how it would, you know, play out because it's moving from a much larger machine to a much more, much smaller, much more intimate machine. And I have to say, it's been fantastic in the month so far. Call it honeymoon period, or you know, whatever we want to call it, but everybody has been fantastic. The people that I've had the opportunity to meet and interact with, and as I'm getting to learn about the community of Twalton, I'm just really pleased to be here, and I'm looking forward to just the opportunities here for me to learn kind of a different order of business, you know, working for a municipality, and hopefully leveraging some of those past experiences to make some valuable contributions here. That's my hope. So thank you for having me.
You're welcome. The fleet here is not the biggest, but it's very well maintained, especially the police vehicles and our street vehicles. And the first challenge I'm going to throw your way is, you know, now that you're the new guy, you're going to have to decorate all these trucks for the Holiday Lights Parade this year. No pressure there. You know, the standard's been set for the last few years, so you've got to change it up a little bit maybe.
I do intend to try to help, you know, with those types of things, so yeah. I will be jumping in.
Cool. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight. All right, another new employee introduction, Abby McFetteridge from a new engineering associate. I got to be in one of her first meetings in. No pressure there.
I didn't know what you looked like, so I was like, I think that's the mayor.
It's a meeting with TriMet. We started her off good.
Good evening, Mayor Bubinik and council. My name is Mike McCarthy, and I'm a city engineer here in Twalton. And it's my pleasure to introduce the newest member of the engineering group in community development. That's Abby McFetteridge. Abby's our new engineering associate, and she started on October twenty-third. Engineering degree from Oregon Tech.
There we go. There you go. All right. Now you've got to start over.
All right, it's my pleasure to introduce the newest member of the engineering group, Abby McFetteridge. And she's a new engineering associate, started here on October twenty-third. She grew up in the Salem area, got her engineering degree from Oregon Tech, and has already passed her engineering exams. She comes to us from Keller Associates where she'd worked as a consultant for a number of other cities. And she's got a lot of abilities we're real excited about. Engineering project management, transportation knowledge, and I've already seen she asks a lot of really good questions. And as her new engineering associate, Abby is going to be managing capital projects, working with me on transportation issues, neighborhood traffic safety issues, and also helping with development review, and also working on water, storm, sanitary sewer as well. And so I know you joined me in welcoming Abby to the city.
Welcome. Get the floor is yours.
Mine's on, okay. Yeah, so I've wanted to work in the public sector since high school. I didn't take a direct path there, but now I'm really happy to be here and looking forward to improving some infrastructure and traffic.
Well, if you can solve the traffic.
Give me, give me twenty years.
All right. Well, welcome. As Mike said, I appreciated that you jumped right in and asked questions with TriMet. We had a really wonky discussion with lots of acronyms, and Abby was asking some great questions. Very much appreciate you being there. I thought it was a good discussion with TriMet. We let them know what we thought. They let us know what they thought, but so now you can develop your relationship going forward in these next twenty years. You know, meeting with the TriMet representatives, doing what we can get, trying to get the best service we can from TriMet, but welcome to the city. I hope you'll be here for the whole twenty years, and maybe you'll take Mike's job one day. But welcome.
Thank you.
All right, that now brings us to public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for anyone to address an item that's not on the council agenda tonight. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone here in this building or at the, in Zoom that would like to address the council, this would be the appropriate time. Do we have anyone in the chamber? No signups? Zoom? I guess maybe there's no hands going up? All right, that brings us on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are those items that are considered routine that will be adopted by one motion unless someone on the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. The consent agenda consists of item one is consideration of approval of the work session and regular meeting minutes of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Item number two, consideration of resolution number fifty-seven thirty-three dash twenty-three to adopt the city of Twalton investment policy. Item number three, consideration of resolution fifty-seven thirty-four dash twenty-three, renaming Stone Ridge Park to Park Las Casitas or Las Casitas Park. Item number four, four, consideration of resolution fifty-seven thirty-five dash twenty-three, authorizing city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County to include design of a trail connection and a water line in the design of the Basal Creek Parkway Extension Project. Item number five is consideration of resolution number fifty-seven thirty-six dash twenty-three, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Clean Water Services for the design phase of the Martin Ozzy Sanitary Sewer Trunk Line Upsizing Project. Is there any items on the consent that a council would like removed and heard later tonight?
I would like item four, resolution number fifty-seven thirty-five dash twenty-three, removed from the consent agenda.
Okay, so hear that a little later night. Any other items?
I'll move that we adopt the consent agenda except item four is right.
I have a motion and a second for those with the movement of one item to later night. All the favors say aye? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next up is under special reports, the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee, Community, and I'm going to talk to Twalton Arts Advisory Committee, Community Enhancement Award. I think Julie is going to lead the discussion, and Angela, you can come on up too.
That, there it is. Well, good evening, Mayor Bubinik. I am Julie Ludeman. I am here on behalf of the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee. Unfortunately, Janet Sager Carr, our chair, isn't able to be here tonight. She's not feeling well, so I am going to do my best to fill her shoes. But I am really honored to be here tonight, and I see that we do have an Arts Advisory Committee member in Zoom. Hello, Brett. So nice to be here, and I am really honored to present the Community Enhancement Award to Angela Ratz, who is here with me. And so I just wanted to talk a little bit about some of Angela's many accomplishments and contributions to art in the city of Twalton. So the Community Enhancement Award is an award that was created by the Twalton Arts Advisory Committee as a way to recognize significant arts endeavors within the city of Twalton. This could be from individuals or organizations. It could be for a particular piece of art or for a body of work. And the city Twalton Arts Advisory Committee will make these recommendations to council periodically. We take nominations from anyone, so anyone in the public can nominate someone for this award. Past recipients go all the way back to twenty-ten. Our very first Community Enhancement Award was Lumiere Players Theater. And our most recent was in twenty-nineteen, so we've had a few years where we have not been in front of you all to award this honor. So most recently, SNA Irish Entertainment for their Irish dancing program at the Winona Grange, and the TriMet Coho Commute Sculpture, which is at the Southwest Mohawk Park and Ride. So, as I said, I'm really happy to be here tonight with Angela Ratz. I feel like this is a long overdue award. I have known of Angela since I started working for the city in two thousand nine, and she has worked as a professional artist. She's a professional artist in Twalton and has worked with the Wild Over Watercolors, formerly Women of Watercolor Group, since at least two thousand nine. And that group meets at the Heritage Center for many of their meetings and does a lot of work to promote watercolor in particular, and the promotion of arts in general. So, a few of Angela's accomplishments. She's, like I said, a very accomplished professional artist. Winner of Best of Show of the Twenty Twenty-three Watercolor Society of Oregon. She is a Twalton resident, holds regular open studios and workshops, and again, is very heavily involved with the Wild Over Watercolors Group, which is held over at the Twalton Heritage Center. I also want to acknowledge Angela's work with the Twalton Living Room Gallery. If you ever are over at the library and you are over by the fireplace and you look up, there is a rotating display of art, and Angela is the curator for that and has been doing that since, again, at least two thousand nine. We are just trying to figure out how long ago that has been. Also brought that entire program to the city of Twalton, so we're really, really happy. I'm really happy to be here tonight to honor Angela for this and just say thank you for all of the work that you've done for the city of Twalton and art in our city. So, thank you so much. And that concludes my presentation.
Angela, floor is yours. Got to turn your mic back on now.
Yes, that's it. I love being
Back off again.
Thank you for the award. It's, it's a great honor to receive it. I love living in Twalton. I've been in the town for over twenty years. And when I came here, it was the first place I felt like this is really a place to land. This is a place to call my forever home. So it's been really wonderful to make friends in the art community and, you know, different places in the art community through the library and Heritage Center and different venues, but it's, it's, it's a place that does value art. And not every community does, so it's, that's a wonderful thing. I'm grateful for that.
I just want a quick comment that prior to being on council was on the TLEC, and that's when I think you sort of taken over, taking the library arch presentations, and that's when, well, second time I heard of your name, but we'll skip the other one. Long time ago, but then when I was on the board of Historical Society, they would always rave about what you've done and the amount of people you bring into the Heritage Center to enjoy your art plus seeing Heritage Center. So I just want to thank you very much for all your efforts over all these years on behalf of the arts. You've been a big force here in town. I just very much thank you for it.
My pleasure.
And we have a plaque for you. Oh yeah, you're next. And Council Brooke is the council liaison to the Arts Committee, and she has a few words.
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate you and thank Julie for coming in and pinching. I also see Brett, who's our vice chair. I don't know if you want to say anything, but we enjoyed so much talking about your work and contribution to the community and understand how filled those classes get, as well as super popular your classes that you do and the wonderful work that you contribute to our community. And also thanks to Julie because I've talked about the Community Enhancement Award before that people can nominate people for this award. And it's a lot better with pictures and a slideshow instead of just an announcement. So thanks for helping us understand what that is and giving us a little history of what the Community Enhancement Award is. Thank you.
You want to say anything, Brett? Man, a few words? All right. Well, thanks again, Angela. You've done terrific work for us and very much appreciate it. That brings us to general business. Item number one, Republic Services Annual Report and Request for a twenty-twenty-four rate adjustment. Discussion will be led by Lindsay and Representatives of Republic. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, mayor and council. Lindsay Marshall at Public Works. It is my pleasure to bring forward tonight our Republic Services team for their annual report and rate review request. So I'll bring up the team in just a minute, and they'll lead the conversation, and then I'll step back, but we'll be available for questions if needed. So they'll be talking about their services in Twalton. They are our franchise hauler, providing garbage, solid waste, solid waste and garbage recycling and yard debris for both residential and commercial customers. They'll be giving an overview of, you know, numbers of those services, that kind of thing, as well as some of the highlights of our partnership. We have a great partnership with Republic Services, both in the services they provide and the different unique events that we're able to do together as a city and the service provider. Then we'll get a little bit into the commercial, I'm sorry, curbside composting that we've been piloting since July, and kind of an update on that, how that's going to go for the next year, as well as information on battery recycling, which we'll be able to pilot next year as well, and then a conversation about rate increases. So I'll go ahead and bring up Jason, Kimia, and Cindy. And then we'll also have Matt and Travis on Zoom if we have any questions for them as well. So bring them up.
Decided we'd just bring the whole gang, both in person and via Zoom. All right, good evening, mayor and city council. First off, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about our Republic Services and what we provide the city. For the record, my name is Jason Jordan, so I serve as the general manager with Republic Services. I've been serving this role for eight years and have been blessed with being able to be a partner with Twalton and the surrounding communities that I've been part of. With me here tonight is Cindy Rogers, who is our Municipal Relations Manager. Cindy's been able to be with our company since May of this year and has gotten knee-deep into city council meetings and the municipalities and all the world that is recycling and garbage. And then with us, who you can kind of see on the double monitor, is our finance manager. So Kimi Marata-Chambers, who has been with us for many years and very excited to be able to present some more details, I think, around how we started conversations last year and being able to provide some more in-depth analysis of our services. So tonight, kind of breaking up our presentation in four sections. So the first section is really talking about the stats of our services, as well as our partnership with the community. Secondly, want to provide a brief update on metro. And one of the biggest cost components of our services are disposal. So just want to refresh council on some of the items we discussed last December, and then provide some updates as well as what we see in terms of metro activities as it pertains to our business. And then third, we want to make sure that we are going in depth about the review of our finances and our services to the city. And again, welcome any questions that we have as a result of that. So we're going to cover a lot during our presentation, and I know there'll probably be questions that pop up. Probably the best way, if council is okay with it, if there's clarifying questions as we go through it, that would be a great time for that. If there's more in-depth discussion, I know I'm sure there'll be some conversations around metro and some of the future there. We can get through the presentation. We can talk through that as well, so. Before I turn it over to Cindy to talk about our services, I do want to speak just on behalf of our employees that are part of this community. Our drivers, who the average tenure is about fourteen years with the company, have a very personal vested interest in providing great service. And so I always know when I, when I talk to our teams and we let them know that we're presenting to the council of Twalton, they always want to make sure that they, they want me to communicate how thankful they are to service the communities and the residents and the businesses. So on behalf of my team, we just want to thank the city for that. So with that, I will turn it over to Cindy.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, mayor and counselors. I'm happy to be here this evening. Republic Services has twenty drivers servicing the city of Twalton. Drivers are at the curbs of nearly six thousand homes for three commodities weekly. Approximately, approximately nine hundred and eighty thousand carts were picked up last year in twenty twenty-two. We serviced over six thousand single-family customers, fifty-five multifamily customers, and seven hundred and ninety-five commercial customers, and did over eighty-one hundred industrial halls, and this includes compacters and drop boxes. This slide shows a breakdown of residential services by cart size. Five hundred and thirty-three customers have a twenty-gallon cart, which is nine percent of the customer base. A little over thirty-one hundred customers have a thirty-five-gallon cart, which is the lion's share. A little over thirty-one hundred customers have a thirty-five-gallon cart, which is the lion's share of the customer base. And finally, over twenty-three hundred customers have a sixty-five-gallon cart, which makes up thirty-nine percent of the customer base. Each residential customer also gets a cart for co-mingle recycle, yard debris with food waste effective July of July first of two thousand and twenty-three, and a tote for glass. Here you'll see the breakdown of the residential tons by commodity. We collected nearly seventeen hundred tons of co-mingle recycling, over forty-five hundred tons of garbage and over three thousand tons of yard debris. This was in two thousand and twenty-two. This slide shows the trends of co-mingle recycle, garbage and yard debris for the years of two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-three. As you can see, both co-mingle and garbage are trending down. Yard debris is up and down, and this is because yard debris weights are most affected by the weather, more affected by weather than behavior. So if we have a wet winter or an ice storm, that can have a significant impact on the weights. These next several slides are community events that we participated in for the city of Tuolton. All of these pictures, all of these pictures are events from this year. However, several of the events, we also participated in last year as well. This event is in partnership with the Tuolton Chamber of Commerce from March of two thousand and twenty-three. It was a career fair at the Tuolton High School. We also did this event in June of last year. One point of interest is that most of the kids were most interested in the tech positions, the tech jobs. This is a trend that we've been seeing at other career fairs as well. This is the, this is a bulky waste event day at our transfer station in WRI in Wilsonville. This event was in April of this year and we collected nearly twenty-six tons from a hundred and ninety-six vehicles. Here is another bulky waste event we partnered with the city on. However, this time it's onsite at Stone Ridge and that event was September of this year. We also did this event in June of last year. We collected nearly nine tons and twenty tires. This picture is from September of this year at Coffin Butte Landfill in Corvallis. The tour was both staff and volunteers. You may recognize some of the people in this picture. We're happy to do tours of both Coffin Butte and WRI whenever you guys would like. Just just give me a call. This was from Rid Patrol Cleanup Project and Republic Services provided a twenty-yard drop box to clean up a houseless camp. This was from May of this year. This houseless camp was located near the Tuolton Community Park. Last but not least for community events, on October twenty-first of this year, we partnered with the Marines for Toys for Tots. We collected two hundred and fifteen new toys, lots of stuffed animals, stocking stuffers, stuffers and cash donations. I was told that we collected more cash at this event than the last three events. The event was staffed by approximately twenty salaried employees. This was the first year we did this event, but I know it's not going to be the last. Let's talk food waste. In July of this year, we officially started a pilot program collecting food waste in the yard debris. Although there is no impacts to rates until two thousand and twenty-five, we are asking council to adopt the food waste in the resolution effective January of next year. This will be par with Tuolton's Climate Action Plan. Want to have as much participation as possible before we factor it into the rates. Anecdotally, I'm happy to report that we've seen about a thirty percent increase in set out, which I think is pretty impressive considering we just officially rolled it out in July. We will continue to work with the city and the county on outreach and education to increase participation. The next two slides show support of this program. I won't read them all, but I will read the one from John and Pam. And their quote is, "I wanted to express how happy Pam and I are over the initiative to be able to recycle our organic food waste through the compost yard debris pickup. It has reduced our weekly landfill to one bag or less." That's impressive. We'd like to, we'd like to do what we did with the food waste and we're asking council to start a pilot program for batteries starting January first of two thousand and twenty-four. This will have no impacts to to rates until two thousand and twenty-five. As you can see here, there's a list and on the left it shows the batteries that are accepted and on the right, the batteries that are not accepted. Just a quick call out on the batteries that are not accepted. So car batteries and batteries for your power tools are not accepted. The next slide shows how to prepare the batteries for collection at the curb. It's it's really not hard, but it's important that they be prepared properly. Just tape the ends of the alkaline batteries, place them in a quart-sized bag and place them on top of your glass in your glass bin. It's important to keep the batteries out of the trash because these can start fires in both the garbage trucks and at the transfer stations. And then I'll hand it over to Jason.
Yeah, just a little PSA on the batteries. They're the number one cause of fires in our transfer stations and in our collection vehicles are batteries. And so it it serves two purposes. It provides another alternative to those batteries ending up in the landfills, which as much as we wish that they wouldn't, they do. That's the first one. And then the safety piece, preventing those fires is is very important for us.
Can you ever go back one slide? Just real quick. Just explain to people the different kind of batteries between lithium ion and alkaline, because some people have no idea when you're when you're taping the battery.
Yeah, so go back one more. Or I'm sorry, actually. The taping of the batteries. So your typical alkaline, that's more like the single use. Your lithium ion is is more of the newer technology and those are the ones actually that are the most combustible. Absolutely, yes. And so the reason that we have those taped is because when they come in contact, especially if you're collecting all your batteries in one bag and they come in contact with others, they have a much higher risk of of combusting. And especially if they're being compacted on a load, that creates, everyone knows that the triangle of causing a fire is, it can definitely lead to a catastrophic event.
But no, no, no big deal if I tape all batteries, right?
Not a big deal if you tape all batteries. You're going above and beyond that, but for sure.
That's what I do.
Yeah, when in doubt. So your alkaline, so if you go, I think it's able to, it's like your typical Duracell. Double A, triple A's, yes.
It'll say, it'll say it on there.
You don't need to on on the alkalines, but the lithium ions, you would. And again, to be safe, it's just easier to tape, tape what you have. All right. No, it's a great, great question.
Yeah, I just tape them all.
All right. So so Cindy talked a little bit about our services and what we provide the community. So I'm going to turn, flip gears a little bit and talk a little bit about Metro and the disposal piece. And so what I wanted to do is is this is a detailed breakdown. And when you will see in in future slides and the review of the financials, disposal and recycling equate to just over forty-five percent of our total costs. And of that garbage is about eighty, eighty-six percent of that. So it plays a large role in what we talk about. So we always feel it's very important to make sure that we're transparent and kind of clear about what what really goes into that. And one of the key components is Metro, which a little history on Metro with the solid waste side is that Metro controls the flow of the solid waste. That's for basically all waste generated in the metro region. Is they allot those tons to the private transfer stations via qualifying for goals. And then also within that, there are certain fees and taxes that are assessed on all those tons generated. So the breakdown of what you're seeing here as we we presented to council this last year is it's really broken up into five main components. And so at a Metro South or Metro Central Transfer Station, one of the components is your tonnage charge. And that's something we're all pretty familiar with in any business or what have you. It's, you know, more or less the cost of operating. So it's the facility operations. In this case, it's the sorting or reloading, the transfer of that material, as well as the depreciation of capital investment. It's your your typical operating costs. And then the next piece that you have there is your regional system fee. And the regional system fee is a fee that's assessed on all tons that are generated within the metro region. And as you can see, is the idea of that system fee is that's supposed to kind of go into a coffer that helps support Metro's activities as it pertains to the recycling and solid waste management. And then next of those is you have your excise tax. And that's really the tax that goes into Metro's general operating expenses. Same thing, that's assessed on all tons that are generated in the metro metro region. And then your two smaller ones, you have your host fee or what some will refer to as the Community Enhancement Fee. And that's a fee that's assessed to WRI or Willamette Resources Incorporated, which is the transfer station located in Wilsonville. So for every ton that we receive in that transfer station, we pay a host fee that's given to the city of Wilsonville for us being there and operating out of out of their their city. And then the next one is your DQ fee, which is your typical fee that has to do with DQ for the regulation, the management of solid waste in the state. So the next slide that I wanted to go through is this, we presented with this with council before. And what this is, is this is more of a visual of those those fees. And so what you're seeing is example of the Metro South and Metro Transfer Station rates. A couple of things I want to point out here is the composite increase for the six years that we're we're kind of speaking up to two thousand and twenty-three. It's been about forty-four percent. And and that's an average of about seven and a half percent increase each year. We are, and what you'll kind of see is we were leading up to, we're almost done with twenty-three, so we have a good majority of those numbers and we're trying to forecast out for two thousand and twenty-four. So we're forecasting at about seven point eight percent on the increase of the metro rates. And a lot of that's due to just, we've seen a large uptick in some of those, obviously some of those rates over the last couple of years. So we're trying to normalize that in in terms of the best that we can forecast that. The other piece I wanted to draw your attention to is the regional system fee and taxes that I was referencing before. Those have increased an average of nine and a half percent each year or about sixty-six percent over when we kind of forecast out for twenty-four. And that is about two dollars and seventy-six cents a year in those fees and taxes alone. Any questions just on the general kind of breakout of of Metro's disposal breakdown? All right, the next slide, this one's a new one, and I wanted to to bring this out because I think what's really important is the city of Tuolton and the surrounding communities, I think, benefit from the fact that WRI is located where it is and that we have the ability to control what we can control and try to manage those costs appropriately and responsibly for for the companies that come to to our transfer station, including our own. And so what you're seeing is a comparison year over year from the metro rates to WRI's rates. And what you can kind of see is we've really tried to, especially when you think about going from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-four. You had a lot of of changes in the local market. You've had COVID that took over a couple of years of all of our lives. And one thing that I think we're really proud of is we've really tried to manage through that appropriately. One area that I would like to call out on this is what you'll see is is a piece that kind of talks about, we're trying to do as close to an apples-to-apples comparison as we can with the Metro Public Station rates. Obviously, as a private transfer station, we don't benefit from not paying property tax. We don't benefit from not paying fuel tax. And so one of the the components that does fluctuate monthly is a fuel recovery fee. And that's based on, again, the market and how much we pay for fuel on any given point. So we try to look at it in apples-to-apples comparison, using the stable rate structure of both to just to show the city that regardless of of the increases that we're seeing in terms of outside of our control, specifically with the regional system fee and the excise tax, that our transfer stations really looked at controlling the controllable costs there. All right. So move over from the disposal side and and talk about when we're given our review of our own collection operations. And one of the things that we've talked about in previous years, but in looking at it as we move forward is the idea of this industry average of a ten percent target rate of return for the operations that that we conduct. And what I'd like to do is spend just a few minutes talking about, so why ten percent? And what does that look like? That seems like a generous return to some, knowing that, right, in some of our different types of industries, those margin percentages are much skinnier, much smaller. But I just want to kind of demystify what what that ten percent means. And so to start, three to four percent, I guess when we look at your operating margin, which we'll we'll discuss in in detail here in a few minutes. After that operating margin comes into effect, three to four percent gets paid out in in federal, state and local taxes. So that's kind of taken off off the top there. And then what we try to do is make sure that we have three to four percent for responsible operating reserves. And, you know, as as we mentioned earlier, this is a very capital intensive service that we provide. It still amazes me sometimes when I think about from what many view as a public utility. There's not a lot of public utilities that you see where you have three, three to four hundred thousand dollar trucks come to the curb every week and pick up our garbage, recycling and organics, take it away and try to do it in a responsible manner. So it is very capital intensive. When we go through some of more details, just something to keep in the back of your mind, when we looked at twenty, I think it's twenty-two numbers, it costs us roughly ten point one million dollars to service the city of Tuolton. So you equate that, that's about eight hundred and forty-four thousand a month. And so when we talk about that three to four percent in our operating margin, that really, I mean, if you did an apples-to-apples, that's really uncovering one or two months of catastrophic failure that we would carry. And then finally, we are a four-profit corporation, so the leftovers, that's about two to four percent, gets paid out in dividends or or distributions, which is then again taxes income. So just wanted to make sure really clear about when we look at that range of eight to twelve, but a target of ten, that the council fully understands why we've targeted that. And that is, that's not just a republic view, that is kind of an industry view, especially within the state of Oregon. So we looked at the overview of Metro, kind of explained what that that target margin looks like. And so the next session, that section that Kimi will talk about is more details about our own specific financials as it pertains to the city. And really within that, you'll see the main factors are have always been pretty much the main factors each year. Dispose on recycling costs, inflationary costs, and then labor costs. One thing to point out is this is, and I think the last I looked, it's the sixth most dangerous job in the world, is being a garbage driver or recycling driver. And so that is a a job that we want to make sure that we're hiring the best and training for, because those drivers are on our streets every single day. So labor is obviously an important piece to that as well. And then specifically that we're asking for council's consideration for a six percent adjustment that would be effective January of two thousand and twenty-four. So with with that, I will turn over to Kimi to provide further detail.
Thank you, Jason. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I think we've all seen this slide before. Hopefully you remember it. As Jason touched on, we like to stay within that ten percent margin. So the two red dotted lines show the range of accepted profitability for our industry in this area. That's between the eight and twelve percent. So the bottom line shows the eight percent and the top dotted line shows the twelve percent. The dark blue line is the midpoint of ten percent and the lighter blue line is where our return was in two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, and where we anticipated to finish in two thousand and twenty-three and forecasted for two thousand and twenty-four. We were able to hit the ten percent with the rate adjustment in two thousand and twenty-one, but fell below the eight percent in two thousand and twenty-two and met in two thousand and twenty-three with the latest rate adjustment last year. But with inflationary costs, labor increases and disposal costs increases, we anticipate following below that range in two thousand and twenty-four. I'll explain in further detail the financial statements on the next few slides, but wanted to kind of graphically show you where we were at. The next slide shows the statement of income without the rate adjustment included. What I kind of want to briefly touch on is in two thousand and twenty-two, our operating income, we forecasted seven point five percent and a net income of five point three percent last year. We came in at nine percent operating income and five point six percent net income. So brief changes while our truck and, or yes, our truck and facility costs rose, we made up some of the efficiencies with our labor expenses. So very close as a percentage of revenue forecasting wise. We're also forecasting a one percent growth in revenue, which is just an estimate. It's fluctuated a lot in recent years. So if we go on to the next slide, I'll we'll discuss the the factors taken into account. This is a statement of income with the proposed rate adjustment effective January first. And this model gets us to just above the targeted range of operating income at ten point one percent in twenty twenty four with a net income of six point three percent. We'll go further into detail of the the expenses next, but just kind of wanted to point that that out with the requested rate adjustment. So in between twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two, our actual expenses in total increased five hundred and sixty eight thousand, which is roughly about six percent. Of that, disposal was a hundred and fifty nine thousand, and recycling was a hundred and eighty four thousand of that change. So twenty twenty two, the five, five million that you see there, disposal was four hundred and or four million, four point three million, which was eighty six point three percent of that. Recycling was three hundred and seventy five thousand and yard debris was three hundred and eleven thousand. So looking forward in twenty twenty three, we forecasted a modest change in disposal disposal and recycling of eight eight percent. Of the five point four million you see on the statement of expenses, five million thirty two is disposal and yard debris. And then four hundred and eight thousand is recycling. Labor increased a hundred and five or a hundred and fifty thousand, six point seven percent. And this reflects the cost of maintaining our talent pool and tenure. In twenty twenty four, of the five million nine hundred and sixty three in disposal and recycling, five point one four five is disposal and four hundred and forty seven thousand is recycling. So just just grand picture here, about eighty six percent of the that change is is related to disposal. Repairs and maintenance, we've managed to keep lower thanks to a more stabilized maintenance team and tenured drivers. We tried to be conservative with some of the estimates, for instance, I think we've discussed fuel in the past in detail. As we've seen costs fluctuate with them and the inflationary factor, we kept it zero percent since we've seen we've seen those costs rise and fall this year. And with our investment in RNG, we didn't want to burden our city partners with bearing that risk. So we'd rather come back and explain those costs to you next year rather than putting them into our rates ahead of time. Management fees and other overhead fees were kept at either two percent or three percent based on where we're trending or minimal inflationary costs. On the next slide, this table depicts Twolton's cumulative rate changes alongside the Consumer Price Index for Urban and Water Sewer Trash Index. As you can see, we're slightly, slightly above CPI urban and well below the Water Sewer Trash Index. This has a few historical points that are factors in both our local market as well as the global market. In two thousand fifteen and sixteen, there was the wood market crash in two thousand eighteen, I think we've all talked about it in depth, is the China Sore recycling market, which led to increased recycling processing costs. And in twenty nineteen, in twenty twenty and twenty one, we're seeing COVID in the aftermath of COVID. On this pie chart basically represents what a thirty five gallon customer, which is your broadest customer base. Their monthly rate goes to currently a thirty five gallon customer pays thirty one forty one. And as you can see in the pie chart, the largest piece goes to disposal and recycling, which is forty five percent. In our twenty twenty three forecasting model, this will make up forty five point six percent of that cost. That's the one we don't have control over. The rate set is in part by metro and recycling costs are based on market prices. And the next largest is labor at six point four percent or six, six dollars and forty cents at twenty point four percent. Fuel is two point zero five. And in twenty twenty two, that was at two point two percent. Truck and equipment was another large slice at six point, eleven point six two percent. And in twenty twenty two, that is at twelve point zero two percent. With that brief overview, I'm going to hand it back over to Cindy.
Thank you, Kenny. So this next slide shows the rates, what the rates would be if council approves the six percent rate adjustment. I'll focus on the most common common service levels. So thirty five gallon, which Kimmy just showed you, makes up fifty two percent of the residents, what the residents have. As you can see, this would be an increase of a dollar eighty eight per month. For commercial, three and four yard are the most common, and the three yard would increase by seventeen dollars and twelve cents per month. And the four yarder would increase by twenty one dollars and seventy one cents per month. Thirty yard is the most common drop box, and the increase would be ten dollars and eleven cents per haul. And on the right there, you can see in the upper right hand corner, it shows the adjustment since two thousand sixteen, and this is including the request of six percent for for this year. These, this averages to be four point two percent over eight years. So to summarize, disposal and recycling increased eight point seven percent in twenty twenty three and is projected to increase nine point six percent in twenty twenty four. Inflation increased by three point two percent in twenty twenty three and is projected to increase by three percent in twenty twenty four. Labor and wages increased by six point seven percent in twenty twenty three and is projected to increase by four point six in twenty twenty four. Due to these factors, Republic Services is asking for a six percent rate adjustment on all services effective January first of twenty twenty four. And thank you so much.
Questions? Council President Pratt.
Thank you for your presentation and thank you for bringing Kim. My question on the, I guess, I'm point, it's the disposal and recycle fees on your table of expenses, well, first of all, you said the metro and your other chart shows that the metro fees are increasing by seven point eight percent. And that eighty six percent is disposal. So I'm wondering how disposal and recycle goes instead of like seven point eight percent, how it jumps to nine point six percent? What what's causing it to be increased over that metro fee?
Are you talking for twenty three?
For twenty four, your projections, you're saying nine point six percent for disposal and recycle and increase over twenty twenty three, but I'm I'm just wondering what comprises that big increase?
So you have obviously the the metro piece, the recycling market, to be frank, is still very hard to to put our finger on.
Which is fourteen percent.
Which is fourteen percent of that. The other piece that we would anticipate is we're not entirely positive on what Metro is going to assess. And what we will see is that we get a forecast, which is a solid waste kind of metro area forecast of the tons that they foresee being available. And then typically in April, May, we'll get a confirmed price on what their regional system fee and what their excise tax assessments are. So a little bit is obviously trying to be conservative on it, but we still need to finalize that, and that's a hard number to nail down.
You're trying to take a guess on what Metro's going to do. Okay, that makes sense.
And and just for clarification, we have requested that Metro has kind of adjusted their schedules because I think we've been educating Metro on what that entails for the franchise haulers, which is the majority of the haulers in the metro area. How difficult that is to really forecast appropriately, especially when we're we're asking for considerations that are for costs that are definitely not just disposal, but our own cost of operations, we really wanted to mystify that too. So we're trying our best to.
And then my other question has to do with that battery program, and I'm wondering, do you have that in place in other cities?
We do.
Okay, and then I I'm just curious, I know we we'll get this whole free year, but what is the average cost for that?
Yeah, great question. So we've been looking at this, and it's always a little hard, right? Because I think once you go through and you empty out all the batteries you've been holding on to, it obviously will die down in terms of of the participation, but what we've seen so far is we've initially rolled this out with the cities and communities that that have the service, it's about eight cents a resident when we looked at it, so it's really nominal. The one thing I would point out, though, is I'm sorry, eight cents a month is what we the equivalent, I apologize, great, great clarification. The the one thing I would point out is the disposal price for batteries is not cheap. So this is definitely a better system, but it's not a cost savings measure. However, because again, as we've seen people empty out what they've they've held on to and carried that through the year, it has decreased those costs because you just don't see as many batteries enter the system. But just for, I guess, reference on what that cost is for disposal, it's about two dollars and eighty cents a pound.
And then on that, if if we were to do that program, would you like, just like with the food scrap thing, would you send the thing to us showing pictures?
Yeah, we would, we would work with staff to make sure that there's education, and I think especially a lot of the questions around what people do to prepare the batteries and the bags and everything. So yeah, we would, we would definitely go through the education piece as well.
Other questions?
So thank you very much for coming here and and sharing with us the complexity of your business, because it's very challenging with big equipment and trash employees. So thank you very much. I'm I'm always very impressed when your trucks come to our home when they're nice and clean. We we have a large fleet in my in my company, worth four hundred vehicles, equivalent to this tremendous cost. And it's challenging to have clean trucks now. I know I'm talking about clean trucks and you're talking about rates, but it 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 all speaks to cost. Happy employees are retention. I was wondering, maybe you could elaborate just a little bit on what your safety record is on accidents? And also in the same vein, what type of training opportunities do you offer your team members for safety? Not full detail, I know this is a dense subject. And the last one, it's around the same thing is retention. You know, what are the efforts that you're you're doing for your your team members for retention? You have, you you gave me a pretty large number on retention, which is phenomenal. But all that plays into cost, long-term cost. Less employees trained, less turnover, less accidents, unhappy employees, then they get accidents more. So my question is around training, safety record, and your retention, because that all plays into cost.
Yeah, great, great questions, councilor. So I'll I'll touch on safety. So our safety record, we 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 gauge our safety off of what we call our focus six, which are our main accidents that we we incur. Pedestrian, intersection, backing, push-pull, lift, and round collisions. And so we we measure that as a safety frequency to those major incidents. And so the division that that services and supports Twolton runs, and what we do is a frequency rating using the two hundred thousand hours, so very, very typical of of a frequency number. That division's running anywhere between probably three to five on our safety frequency. But I would say more importantly is, I think, the training that our our drivers and such receive on the safety side of thing. If if we get a new driver, for example, they go through a six-week training before they are released, and that training involves a behind-the-wheel instructor that is typically an individual driver that's been on the road for a long time, that driver has to go through a certified training program. And then they meet with an operation supervisor and a manager each week to sign off on what training was completed. And then at the end of that six weeks, they actually have to go through a certification with an area safety director that tests them on their understanding that goes through the training booklets and make sure that they're that we feel that they're safe to to hit the road. After that, with this group, they have a, we'll call it a kind of break-in period where we have our operation supervisors, our leads will ride with those individuals as they go on their routes, and just to follow up to make sure that they're comfortable with operating as 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 you mentioned, these are large trucks. So very different from a typical CDL where you're maybe driving a truck from point A to point B. Our residential drivers are performing anywhere between eight hundred to a thousand lifts each day and contending with everything that you see on the road, just driving, you know, to and from, but they do it while actively engaged in 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 their work. As well as, we actually just recently started a CDL training program as well as a technician training program, both locally, and then we actually have an institute that is run by Republic Services in Texas. So if we identify someone that has the desire to get their CDL, we actually send them down to Texas to train within our program for nine weeks, and then they come back. And then they are with us for a minimum of two years as they go through that that progression to be comfortable with their CDL. So that kind of correlates with safety and training, and then I would say engagement, the the tenure of our folks. First off, our our drivers take a lot of pride in what they do, and it's not just our drivers, but our support staff. They've seen the communities grow, they've been part of it, they've, and if you see all the different events, that's something that we take into consideration and very seriously. We do an engagement survey twice a year that with our teams, as we've achieved a hundred percent participation. And we ask the questions, what could we do better with engaging our communities? What do we want to share with you? What actions can we take? And so we use that in terms of how we address and retain our employees. But I would say, you know, our our concern and our fear is this is a an industry and a trade that not many people, you know, are are venturing into anymore, and I don't think they see it as something that can provide a career, and I will tell you that our our drivers that have been here for a while are here for a reason. It's a great career, but there is a fear about how do we continue to staff and maintain that? And so I think that's where we've shifted our focus to how do we find good people and train them up through the program? Whereas I think in the past, you found a lot of good CDL experienced drivers that could go and and kind of start, you know, at a certain level, we're trying to start that from the ground up more.
All that sounds just amazing, and I it's pretty evident it isn't just talk. I see it in your trucks and your tenure, so thank you very much for answering the question.
Other questions? That's Will Hillier.
Thank you, thank you for the great presentation, though I had to flip around everywhere. It was kind of hard to follow, and some of the slides that you gave us, just FYI, are not were not, your presentation was different than what we received, so just FYI. So I guess I always go back to, I get that we have to do what we have to do to especially the level of service that you provide us, and I just continue to worry about our low-income be folks and our senior citizens. And I asked the question last year, and I'll ask the question again, what are we doing for them?
Yeah, councilor, actually, we were talking with with staff, there are programs that are out there that the city, should they choose to to participate in that, can create a a low-income or hardship program for the residents. That being said, I think, and I think we mentioned this last year, is we we tend to follow at the the lead of the city on that. We will, at that partnership, to make sure that we have something in place. Washington County is an example of where they've they've instituted that program. And so that's something I think we can work with with city staff and and come back with.
Thank you. I I also last year brought up that in the municipality my dad lives in, Tigard, their provider offers an opportunity to just call, and I can I can only imagine what a nightmare that would be for your agency. And so I'm, I do not discount that as I'm asking this question. But I do think that with the number of senior citizens and lower-income people that we have to 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 not have an option to at least once a month, especially with the price going up, I know it's only a few dollars a month, but it's going to keep going up a few dollars every year, and then the battery thing, and then the food waste thing, that by the way, I got rats, thanks a lot. But anyway, you know, like, I'm just saying, like, it's just going to keep going up, and it has to to maintain the great level of service. And I'm just very concerned because social security doesn't keep going up at that high rate. So I I would love to hear action on that if possible. Thanks.
That's the rest.
Yeah, thank you very much for the information. And I I too agree with Councilor Hillier about caring for those who are low-income and and the seniors. Specifically, they live alone and possibly on social security. So a program out there for them will be really, really, I will support that a hundred percent. And it will kind of justify to a little bit, like, oh, we're going, because we're helping people within our community. I I just, quick question, and I just, I was I was going through your slides to for the new for light bulbs, I've actually For the new um for light bulbs, I've actually, how do you, how do you actually dispose of light bulbs? Um that you can educate us on, because I tried different ways and. They were different every time I tried, so uh whether they're light bulbs like these or. Just regular household light bulbs, I know they weren't, they were telling us not to put them in the trash, so.
Correct.
Could you talk a little bit?
So, so compact fluorescent bulbs as well as, as, you know, your, your traditional lights here. These are very, well, actually, I think these are LEDs, um but I, those um. We'll call them, right, they're T fours or T eights, but those are very fragile, and so we actually have a mail, mail-in program. When they come through the transfer station, obviously, we don't dig through the garbage to try to pick those out. So they, if an individual is putting them in the garbage, they're getting. Trans, you know, transferred into a trailer and they're going to a landfill, and that's not a great thing. There are options, uh like I said before, is we have a, a mail-in program where actually we, we can provide. A, you know, a resident or business can, can do a prepaid box. That box is set up, they fill it up, and they can mail that back um as an option, that's not something that has been part of the franchise, that's just something. The company um has as part of a um, a national program. But I think how we dispose of it is, is those items have to be separate for us to be able to do anything with.
Okay, so in the meantime, just make that phone call, I guess, and see if they can get that prepaid.
We can provide, I think, uh a list with staff of areas around the metro region that, that residents and businesses can take those to if they so choose, so. We can provide that.
Okay, um, thank you, and I also see the um. Hot things are going up, and it might sound like, Councilor Hiller, I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just saying exactly what you're saying. Can see it's only like a dollar eighty-eight or two dollars, but it is adding up, and. Um there are a lot of things that are adding up lately, and in the end, you're paying a hundred, two hundred dollars more on things that fees on. Not just this one, but on other fees, and it just adds up to, to the community, and it is a burden um as we see.
Other questions? Council Brooks.
Thanks for the presentation, I just had a really quick question. Um can you explain just really simply why um. When amounts go down of garbage, that the rates go up, just for clarification in a really clear way. Um around this rate increase, because I too am concerned, and especially with other utilities, talking about big rate. Increases, it's a really sensitive time, I think, for people, everyone's dealing with inflation. And so many people are, like, you know, our family stuff, you know, it's just a lot, so I'm just curious about that.
Yeah, I think uh, yeah, trying, trying to break this down in a simple way, because that, this is a very. Much more complex than I'd ever imagined when I first started working here is, I would say. The emphasis on the reduce is the most important piece. Uh I would not be surprised to see the recycling rates continue to rise. Um our. Processors, I just got a, a recent update from, from one of our processors, that Nine Dragons. Um has pretty much cut off um all supplies that, and anyone knows that Nine Dragons is. Is one of the uh world's largest manufacturer of paper located in China, where a lot of the exports of paper go. Uh they've kind of put a stop on, on supplies, so now you have a surplus of, of paper, which obviously crashes the market, and so. I don't foresee the costs of recycling drop and disposal, same thing, I think what we're seeing in, in terms of the areas. So I think the idea is we have to outpace those rising costs with the reduction of the waste. Um and I think when we shift from, we'll say garbage, and I think the Residential Organics Program that, that City Pilot is a great example of. How to, to kind of control that is, and I have three kids, so the food waste that we produce at home is unbelievable. But what we see is that if, you know, we move that from the garbage, which we're paying, you know, a hundred and thirty plus a ton to dispose of. Versus yard debris and, and organics, which is less, that's how we can control some of those costs as well, so. Um it's an all-out effort, but I would say the best thing we can do is reduce the waste that we're actually putting into the garbage can itself.
Thank you, that's really helpful, so really use those, that new program.
Yeah, all these alternatives, I think, are great, when we're talking about cost control, and then. Uh just, just remember is that the resident has, they pay for a package program. So if they're producing less and they've been on a sixty-five gallon cart. And they shift down to a thirty-five gallon because they're, they're producing less garbage, that will ultimately save, um save them in their monthly costs as well.
Thank you, and I too think that looking into what the programs for low-income would be a good thing for us to do.
That's a rest.
One more question, because I actually um was considering a lot of things that, as I was reading about the new, where you put the. Waste, food waste um into the garb- uh what it would be the. Grass and bin, right? So the, there are times where you don't want to put the, like, say, for instance, just the. Beat or things like that, right in the, in the, in that bin, is there, are there any bags that you recommend, like, that are. That are eco-friendly, or there aren't, is such thing as that?
Great question.
Thing as that, I mean.
Yeah, I, I think that there's, I mean, there's obviously compostable bags that are out there, and I think the key, though, is. The idea of how long that bag takes to compost, right, to break down. Um I would say that the best option you can have is, is craft paper. So your paper bags, if you place that in that and place it into your um organics cart, that helps. Um I know for us, like, we'll line, we have a kitchen counter pail, we'll line it with paper towels, um that helps. Um but the craft paper is probably the easiest way, because that's something that can break down, because it is a, a paper fiber.
Other questions? I'm going to say the tough one for last year.
I was waiting for it.
You know this, you know this one's coming, uh so Crystal Ball, um. The Metro is out shopping their facility improvement plan. With four different scenarios, they presented it to the Metro Mayor's Consortium. Last week, and it was a resounding thud, uh you know. And I'm just wanting to hear from you that, long story short, they're looking at four different scenarios in Metro of. Uh build to no build uh in the metro area to better help with garbage collection and recycling. But your four different scenarios is a ten-dollar per month difference as far as rates. And these rates are not going to be coming from Republic, they're going to be coming from Metro. So in your conversations with Metro, where I'm assuming that this, these fees, we've tacked on to the regional system fee. Um so that they could build out these facilities, so we've got, we're looking at year twenty twenty-four, but I'm looking beyond right now. Depending, because by December, Metro's supposed to going to make a decision on this, on how they can build, either build out their facilities or not build. And what the impacts would be on you and our rate pairs.
Yeah, Mayor, great question, so I, I attended um the Metro Symposium that was in September, um that was a conglomerate of. Um city government, nonprofit, uh for-profit to, to speak to those specific scenarios, and. I think we left with more questions than we had with answers, and I think one of, of the main, I think there were two main ones that we had with this, is one. Is um what is, what is the future priority of Metro? And what, what I mean by that is, a lot of those scenarios that the mayor was talking about had to do with. Smaller reuse or recycle centers, um to help address assess- uh accessibility, right, for those that, that can't um. Get to some of these transfer stations or larger-scale recycle centers. Um so there wasn't a lot of conversation around all these different nonprofits. Um they had a, a map that had all these dots that were grayed out, that really didn't describe what they were. And so one of the questions we asked is, okay, hey, you're, you're creating these scenarios that involve Metro stepping in and, and. Either building new sites or uh building mega sites or smaller sites, but what about what's already existing in, in the metro region? So that was one of the questions we asked is, what role does Metro want to play in that, and then is Metro utilizing what's already available? Um and just having a better partnership, and I think, you know, kind of a secondary to that question is, you know, the solid waste. The solid waste is a very stable system, the tons are generated, they may fluctuate up or down, given our population, but. Um we have created over the number of years, a system that supports that, and that has capacity for that as is, and really the, the need. That the area and the metro region sees is more in the northwest um section of, of Metro. And so I think we left with those questions of, okay, we understand the accessibility piece there, but the system itself isn't necessarily broken. And so we would like to understand, and I think going back to, to your question of cost. We would hon- honestly want to understand, what are the cost components that Metro's put together for. A mega transfer station or smaller neighborhood recycle centers, and I believe that's where Metro's starting to work towards. Um because the numbers that were, were put out there, we really couldn't understand how they translated to. Um the rate pair covering that, and so I wish I could tell you exactly how that affects us, but. I think we have a lot more questions that we're waiting on answers for as well.
We had the same take, and the biggest head-scratcher was the no-build situation was the most expensive.
Right.
We're, we're like, how's that possible?
Doesn't make, yeah.
How's that make?
For us.
And, you know, um. And the other thing we pointed out, as usual, is that these metro facilities, not one of them is going to be in our area. The closest one, we might be lucky if they get one of these scenarios, is Beaverton. Um so it really doesn't help us, you know, Wilsonville facility is still the closest to do anything with, or you're driving out to Oregon City. Or they build this mega facility in Beaverton, I don't know where, in Beaverton.
Right.
Uh they have the space for this, but uh this isn't something I want, I sent out to the counselors over the weekend that we have to keep an eye on, I know you guys are. Um because there's always the question of, why is Metro in this business? That's the question the mayor's asked, is why are you doing, why are you in this still? I mean, it's a revenue generator, because every time they raise your rates, that also increases the excise tax, so they're going to double increase.
Right.
Um but I'm going on a tangent here, but this scares the hell out of me. Because then this is just more fees they can tack on to you that get passed through to us. Uh every year for their facilities, that really we don't have access to, and it's willing to drive to Oregon City, Beaverton, all the way up to North Portland.
Right. And Mayor Counsel, I would want to point out one other item that we did ask to, for Metro to keep in mind, and for us all to keep in mind is. Um RMA or the Recycle Modernization Act is underway, and that will change our system in the state uh for the long term as well. So there's a lot of, of pieces that Metro is putting together that are kind of running in congruent to this, that we're asking for, hey. With the RMA and the way that that legislation works and how we're creating um extended producer responsibilities and, and. PROs that are managing, let's say, mattress recycling, for example. Um that could be a program that's introduced statewide, that's funded, that would be introduced, right, and help out the metro region, so we're kind of asking, hey. What role does RMA play into, to this concept as well, because we didn't really see that integrated when we looked at those scenarios.
Any other questions? Alright, so our decision tonight is, uh the question is, are we okay with the six percent rate increase? Are we not happy with it, or we're going to run them out of the room? There's a discussion right now, what do we want to do as far as their request for ra- rate increase? Council President Pratt.
I, I'm actually fine with it, and I, but I would like to, in the future, look at some kind of program for, you know, our low-income people.
Councilor Gonzalez.
I, I do support the uh, the increase for them, but also the caveat is the alternative options for the low, in my, in seniors, so just for information.
So Karen, do we need a vote on this, is just a?
We'll bring back a resolution at the next council meeting.
As long as we get the head nods, six percent's fine? You're on it, we're looking for general direction. Okay, so six percent is fine for this year?
And um we will follow up with Republic on, like, the, uh, a utility. Like, maybe combining it with our utility billing assistance program that Dawn's been working on. I, I'm thinking maybe that there's something there. Okay.
Hello, Washington County and uh the city of Hillsborough are, have, are. In their first year of a reduced rate program, and so it's something that I've been keeping an eye on to see what their lessons learned have been, how, what their processes. Are going to be, so it was our, kind of, in our plan to come back um this time next year to talk about that program.
Right.
This is really important, we would love to have one of your trucks in our holiday lights break.
So, so Counselor Pratt, Sher- Sherilyn actually caught me on the way in, so I.
I mentioned it as well.
Yes.
I watch it from my house, so.
So I, I cannot guarantee, because I have to talk to our operations manager, but um the chances are is we would be very excited, I can't believe we missed that opportunity before, so.
Do the Saturday one, for sure.
Yes.
Well, thank you all for coming tonight.
Appreciate it, thank you very much.
Um so we also are looking for a direction to move forward and accept the uh curbside composting and the battery collection for. Next year for the full pilot and to be robbed in trades for next year, so we'd like to. Get direction on saying yes to that.
Okay.
Okay.
So, but that's included in the six percent, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
But you have to, you have to put that in your resolution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make it official.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I don't want that thing anymore.
Alright. Scroll back up. I think it's Steve next, right? Alright, next up, I think we have Steve with our continuing education series, now we're getting, we're getting the. Planning three oh one, we're making head strides here, we're in junior year now, yay. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel, good evening, I'm Steve Cooper, Assistant Community Development Director, and I'm joined by Aaron Engman, Senior Planner. Uh tonight's conversation will include a brief recap of our previous learning series. Um and provide a little bit of background on the function of the development code. I'll then turn it over to Aaron, who will capably go through Twalton's development code. When it applies and how the different chapters of the development code work together. And then we'll end with questions and preview our next and final discussion topics in the planning learning series, after which you'll get diplomas. Just kidding. Maybe we will. Now, I let, I opened the Pandora's box. Okay, so historically, planning as a government function started out, as you'll recall, in response to the growth of the suburbs in the nineteen fifties. That was accelerated by the baby boom and the private automobile. Oregon, in response to the environmental concerns of the day and the notion that sprawl might eventually connect. The Portland and Salem areas together, created a statewide planning program which required cities in Oregon to plan. In compliance with these statewide requirements, Twalton adopted its own comprehensive plan and development code. More recently, I'd note, we've also seen changes to land use regulations coming from the state. Not in the form of new state planning goals, but rather specific mandates. In our next learning series, Planning Two Oh One, we took a deeper dive into the comprehensive plan specifically. We learned that a comprehensive plan is a high-level policy document that balances the community and council's vision for itself. It's destiny with those statewide planning rules that I mentioned on the previous slide. The policy areas that Twalton's comprehensive plan cover are broad and include everything from community design. To housing, to economic development, and parks, to name a few. In other words, the comprehensive plan takes those high-level policy buckets and attaches goals, what the community wants to see happen, and policies. How the community wants those goals to happen to each policy bucket. The comprehensive plan serves as an interpretation of the community vision, or what may, might be referred to as the public interest. The most salient point as it relates to tonight's discussion is that the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan are by their nature broad. And are carried out by specific development code requirements. As we will see on the next slide, the development code is the doer of city land use regulation, and if we want to change how development happens. Then the development code is the target of that change. So briefly, what is a development code? As we've learned, the development code is the doer of the community vision. As expressed in comprehensive plan goals and policies, and it's the way that those get implemented on the ground. Unlike the comprehensive plan, which does not re- apply specifically or directly to. Unlike the comprehensive plan, which does not apply specifically or directly to development proposals. The development code does apply to those proposals. It applies broadly and we'll get a little more specific on the following slides to changes to buildings. Or the land on private property. As we'll discuss in greater detail on the following slides, the development code includes zoning, which is used is allowed in each area of the city. And development standards. To illustrate this point, we've taken on the left-hand portion of the slide, an existing comprehensive plan goal and policy under chapter two. Our community design chapter. As you can see on the right-hand part of the slide, a new development code provision, just an example, one that we. Put together for the purposes of this exercise. To add standards for a food cart pod fits nicely within the existing comprehensive plan policies. The comprehensive plan, in other words, is intentionally succinct, yet relatively broad in nature to provide sufficient flexibility. To allow for changes in the development code as the community and council see fit. I will now turn it over to Aaron, who is going to walk us through when a development code applies, when it does not apply. And then provide an overview of Swalton's development code.
Thanks, Steve, and good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for allowing me to present to you tonight. So following our examples of when the development code applies. It's broadly applicable to any exterior modification to private property. Specifically, if we're talking about a multifamily, commercial or industrial development. In some instances, it would occur um, for remodeling of existing structures, particularly when it will. Change the exterior appearance of the building. So we're showing our Bridgeport Village remodel as an example. And then in the last example, that would apply to subdivisions. Or integrating or change of topography to establish um, a new use for the land. And then for examples of when the development code does not apply. Does not apply to activity that's limited to the public right of way. So an example would be some of the Twalton moving forward projects. Because those are limited to the public right of way and not on private property. Um, and then for our next example, uh, it's illustrated by an existing. Commercial tenant space and perhaps a new business is looking to locate there. Um, if that new business was looking to do any modifications to the exterior of the building, that's when the development code would apply. But if they're just establishing themselves as a new tenant. Um, and maybe just making improvements to the interior. In that case, the development code would not apply and it would be regulated by the building code. And then for our last example is um. Effects of a permitted activity. So we used an industrial type use. So with the development code, it kind of speaks to mitigative measures to prevent some. Um, unwanted activities. So in this case, the development code would say that uses have to be within a completely enclosed building. But perhaps some industrial uses may have some noise pollution, which would be regulated by our municipal code. And then kind of doing a deep dive into our development code. It's a dense document. It's forty-four chapters in total. So for tonight, we just wanted to bundle these chapters into like groupings and kind of provide some examples for you. So for with this first slide, um, we're going to talk about the regulatory chapters. And these provide a framework for our land use reg- regulation. These chapters include legal definitions, the various procedures for the review of land use applications and legislative proposals. Um, as well as their corresponding applications, middle requirements and approval criteria. And then moving on, we're going to dive into some of our zoning chapters. We have nineteen different zoning districts in total. And as Steve mentioned, zoning is a tool that groups compatible uses into certain areas of the city. It also um, can dictate the scale of the built environment. So these zoning chapters typically include a purpose statement, permitted uses, limitations on those permitted uses. And development standards like setback and building height. So for this particular example, we're illustrating the residential low density zone using our Fox Hill subdivision. And you'll see that the permitted uses are specific to single family dwellings. Uh, we do also allow accessory dwelling units and recently we've opened that up to include middle housing as well. We do have modest structure heights in this zone at thirty-five feet. And the maximum lot coverage is forty-five percent. So we do get some green space and coverage in these residential areas to keep that nice community character. Um, our next bundle is the institutional and commercial districts. So for our example, we're talking about the office commercial zone using the Mohawk Business Park. This district permits a variety of office uses with some limited commercial uses that. Um, work nicely and accessory to these office uses. As an example, daycare or fitness centers. And then again, we have a modest structure heights of forty-five feet in this zone. Moving on to a bundle of our commercial zoning districts. We're using the Bridgeport Village and the mixed use commercial zone is our example. Um, for the mixed use commercial zone, it's primarily centered to a variety of uses that co-mingle to have a vibrant, walkable neighborhood. Um, you'll see that our structure heights get quite a bit taller in this district to encourage that density. And our maximum lot coverage also kind of encourages this density at ninety percent. Moving on to our industrial district bundle. Um, we're focused on our manufacturing. Sorry. General manufacturing zone. I had a brain fart. I'm a little tired right now. And using A and I distributors as an example. So in this zone, it focuses on our heavier manufacturing operations. Um, things that have more impactful. Uh, nature than the light manufacturing district, which is. Generally bordered by our residential zone. So the light manufacturing district is kind of our buffer and then we get into this heavier use. Um, we do permit some commercial uses in this industrial zone um, as dictated by Metro. And we have um, a little higher maximum structure height of sixty feet in this zone, just to maximize um. Our employment and industrial zoning capabilities. We also have a special supplementary zone that speaks to industrial uses. In chapter sixty-three, we include some environmental regulations. To protect the city's public health, safety and general welfare. Um, these regulations also protect natural areas from the adverse effects of industrial development. And it gives the city authority to enforce regulations that might relate to noise, vibration and air quality and the like. On this slide, I want to highlight our overlay chapters. These are special districts and special regulations that are placed over an existing zone. So for our example, we have our historic preservation regulations. And these would be applied to twenty locally designated landmarks throughout the city. And they provide extra standards to preserve, protect and maintain the landmark resources. They also include procedures if the property owner was looking to relocate, alter or potentially demolish these landmarks. We're also highlighting our wetlands protection district overlay zone. So as an example, Sweet Pond would fall under this protection district. And it protects wildlife habitat and natural wetland resources while also permitting um, complimentary development adjacent. And then it also includes some setback and regulatory provisions, just to again, protect these wetland areas. And then kind of getting into the meat of our development code, we have our design chapters. The purpose of the design chapters are to promote functional, safe, innovative and attractive sites and buildings that are compatible with the surrounding community. These standards apply to the placement and relationship of proposed site elements, including buildings, vehicular circulation and parking. Bike parking, walking or walkways, excuse me. Buffer areas, landscaping and waste enclosures. Certain uses and zones are also subject to standards for building form, which include um. Design standards for the building itself, roof design, building materials, placement of windows and identifying features as an example. And then moving right along, we have some chapters that are um, regulating our public facilities. That includes public improvements and access management requirements. And these are generally dictated by the city's current adopted transportation system plan or utility master plans like our sewer, water and stormwater master plans. And then our development code also includes some maps and figures that illustrate a variety of land use related concerns. This might include wetland delineations, environmental overlays, feature trail alignments, and as this example shows, street design standards. And I'll kind of bring it full circle with a summary. As Steve shared earlier, a comprehensive plan is a high level of policy document that guides the community's vision related to growth and development. And then I kind of wanted to kind of touch about some of these amendments and what those look like. So with a comprehensive plan, there's a few different options. Um, in Twalton, we kind of. Have um, been using targeted amendments that update our comprehensive plans as we update our master plan efforts. So um, recently we bought the water master plan to you and a few updates to our comprehensive plan were also proposed as part of that. Um, in some instances, the city may choose to do a full sweep update of their comprehensive plan. However. This is a significant effort. Um, it requires um, quite a bit of staff time, consultant help. And a lot of public outreach and can be um, a timely project. And then moving on to our development code, which Steve said is kind of the workhorse that implements our community vision. Um, standards to update these regulations can occur periodically through councils discretion. Um, a property owner may submit a quasi judicial request. And what that means is they're looking to make an amendment specific to their property, so it doesn't have a large sweeping effect on the city. Um, and lastly, just to comply with state mandates, as we're seeing Oregon kicking out quite a few mandates that affect our development code. And I just want to highlight that with these development code updates, the effort varies by project. And we'll get into more of that when we talk about our work plan with you at a later date. So with that, um, we'll come back to you in the future to discuss Planning Four Oh One, which is. Kind of the full circle of our development process, how we work with our engineering and building divisions up to construction. And at that point, I'll open up for questions. If you have any questions about our development code presentation.
Questions for Aaron and Steve. This person Pratt.
Okay. Oh, first of all, can you define what middle housing is?
Yeah, so middle housing includes um. A wider suite of housing choices. Um. Historically, they've been excluded from single family zoning. But I I think what we were seeing prior to the. The. Post-war changes, um, is it just encouraged greater housing opportunities for folks and. Created um, more diverse neighborhoods. So with middle housing, we're talking about duplex development, triplex development, quadplex development.
Then um. Oh, it seems like we just ran across this with the pickleball thing. But it seems like when you make a change to the, a zone in the development code, that it's a lot of work. So can you kind of give a really quick overview of what all is involved? So that makes it so difficult.
Yeah, with a a plan text amendment or plan map amendment, you would be engaging council. Writing findings about how these changes would impact the community. And then based off of what the amendments are, it might require. Large public noticing requirements or just posting in our newspaper and uh, locally. Um, so there is quite a bit of legwork, even if it's just a small change. Um, it becomes more legwork if it's a broad change where we want to engage the community and get their thoughts and feedback on what we're doing.
Yeah. I was just wondering, you know, you mentioned about the comprehensive plan and all the work is, I'm wondering like, is there like a typical? Like I know like the Parks Master Plan is maybe eight years and all that. So is there like a typical um, timeframe that cities? And entity or governmental entities kind of relook at, revisit that?
I would say there's not. I mean, I think if you're talking about the comprehensive plan itself. There certainly is like, you know, so the transportation system plan is part of the comprehensive. And so there are guidelines for things like those. But I mean, if you add them all up, those actually comprise actually the bulk of the comprehensive plan. And so if you're regularly changing those documents, you're not really left with necessarily. Like, I mean, you have. Chapters that pertain to kind of generalities, but like, you know, for example. We have to update the housing needs analysis every so often. So then we update the housing chapter. We have best practice for updating the economic. Opportunities analysis. And so then we update the economy chapter. And so real, and then some of the chapters like. You know, uh, public participation, for example. Unless we're planning to change the way in which we engage with the public. There wouldn't necessarily be a need to change it, I guess, is the.
Okay, I guess I I'm still not understanding because I get like you have all these pieces you're. But you don't have the overall vision of where you're headed. You know, you have pieces of it, but don't you need to have an overall kind of vision of? What you want? And then those are the underlying pieces of the.
So I mean, I I think the question is, is that, I mean, is there? A best practice for how frequently a community visioning is done? I would say probably every like twenty years. Or so, and to the extent that the city wanted to go through a new visioning process. You know, twelve and twenty-four or twelve and. Tomorrow isn't, is coming up on twenty years old now, I guess. Maybe a little bit less. And so. You know, once twelve and tomorrow is uh, twenty years old, I think that maybe that's a, you know, valid time to go back and look at it. And then. I think the question is, is what comes out of the visioning? Are there changes to the comprehensive plan that are needed or? I mean, in some cases, you know, and this is looking back at twelve and tomorrow, not to get too specific or granular, but. Many of the changes of twelve and tomorrow were implemented through changing the development code. You know, rather than the plan.
Okay, I guess.
Or for example, like housing was something that was brought up in twelve and tomorrow, but that. We did it differently, right?
Okay. Yeah, I guess my concern is that. It seems like you guys are so overwhelmed with day to day that um, I'm concerned that we're not visioning out what we want the future of our. Community to look like.
Yeah, I mean, so twelve and tomorrow was last done in twenty fourteen, so I mean. Twenty thirty-four. So I mean, twenty thirty is when we would start looking at maybe. Scoping an update to that. I guess would be the answer.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Council Brooks.
Um, just to kind of bounce off. Um, that I guess just for a a general conversation. Um, because some of the things are, what's really on my mind today actually is. Washington State approved uh, changes to middle income, middle housing to go to six units. Which is causing a big stir in the appraisal industry, I'll say. Um, and I don't think they really checked it out that well, but um. I'm curious of the last, I guess, uh. Since we're talking in that ten years, what's the, what are the most um. Um, impactful changes that have come from the state? Like what kind of categories? Are things that we've accommodated as a city in the last? Like what are we?
I mean, I think honestly, they're they're yet to come. I think that climate and specifically the way in which the state is. I think imposing fairly top-down requirements as opposed to the traditional. I think imposing fairly top-down requirements as opposed to the traditional system, which is, I guess, kind of goal oriented or like, so I mean, the example is, is that we previously had statewide planning goals. And so instead of updating those statewide planning goals to accommodate the governor's climate um executive order, they basically just new law was added with direction on how to achieve that as opposed to the traditional model of setting a goal and then the city gets the opportunity to engage with its citizens and figure out its best way to meet those goals. And kind of like everyone might have a slightly different way of meeting them based on the local community flavor, I guess. I would describe it as or the, you know, individual context. So you know, obviously having like a lot of Spanish speakers in our community, we might have a different way of solving things than other people. Um the fact that we have a high amount of employment land, like we might have a different way of looking at things. So I think that's one of them. The second one, which um you know, again, is a future work session topic, is housing and the way in which the state is looking at future changes. Um and this is what they call the regional housing needs analysis. I guess it's now been changed to the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. And so, you know, if you'll remember back to our discussions from twelve and twenty forty and then from the Norwood Housing proposal, we had this one thousand fourteen uh units, which was our city's goal for the next uh twenty years. And so the way that the state is looking to rewrite housing when we do our next housing needs analysis in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five, is that um the city will be allocated a share of the state's overall housing under production. And so that one thousand fourteen number is probably gonna quadruple, maybe grow ten- tenfold. Um so those are two specific very like top-heavy, top-down. Uh.
On the same land, sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, and so those, I mean, those are the two that I can think of right now, but um and it may be that they revisit other things like to Counselor Brooks's point, like how they do middle housing. I don't know that it's been really like successful in terms of resulting in a large number of built units. And so I have to imagine at some point someone's going to go back and look at revising that upwards. But I don't, I don't know that for sure.
Um. So I got, I mean, kind of going to uh Council President Pratt's point around um I guess myself, part of this is about getting grounded with the conversation, which is, it's, I mean, you guys work in the department, it's like a huge thing. It's one of the most challenging, but also one of the most important conversations that we have with our residents is really land use decisions, traffic, you know, all this stuff. Um and then the way the state's doing things is changing. So I'm just curious about um ways that we as uh counselors could, you know, continue to be educated about these big state changes, what kind of goals we should be anticipating and being ready to look at. I think these chunks, especially with um, I always get it wrong, the opportunity zones and the whatever they are, the uh urban renewal zones, I always get them wrong, too much time to try. So um the urban renewal zones and things like that. I think that between, at least for me, and I know that you guys know this, is climate action is a really important conversation. Housing in general is a really important conversation. And then managing density is a really important conversation and balancing those needs and making sure that everyone's kind of heard and making sure that I feel like I'm doing a good job as far as um advocating the best that I can. And it's hard too, also educating our community, um not just lifting voices obviously now, but also educating our community on some of the state um mandates that we're facing instead of um that's a big s- big change. So um and I think it's helpful, just like it's helpful for people to understand that we the city doesn't own all the roads or things like that, just to make it a better communication experience and planning experience for, not just for us or you guys, but to me, it's the place where the community can be the most contentious and the most engaged. And I want to feel like I'm doing the best that I can do. So those, that's what I'm interested in. And I always appreciate your answers. Um thanks, Steve, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Other questions? Uh I've got two and they're not super hard. Like I threw it at Republic. So on, uh let's focus on the TSP. So walk me through, we go through the process of TSP and we have some great aspirational goals, what we want to get done in the city in the next ten years. How does that trickle down? I know it gets, the results of the TSP gets augmented into comprehensive plan. But how then does that get reflected in our development code in a timely manner so we can get to where we want to be and say in terms of level of service from TriMet, uh dealing with the railroad, traffic and congestion, work with Washington County on road projects. I know some of that is the comprehensive plan, but how do the details get into the development code in a timely manner so we can implement these things? Because we know we're gonna get a great output from the TSP process, that people are gonna be looking for to us to say, how are you gonna implement this thing?
Yeah, I mean, that's a great question. Thank you. Um so I mean, the, as of right now, the TSP update is being made on the basis of the existing development code and the existing zones in the city, and then understanding the growth. At the comprehensive plan level, based on the um comprehensive plan changes that were made by the council in response to the twelve and twenty forty work that was done, there are, you know, these ideas, and I think they're largely complementary with the climate action plan as far as densification around downtown, um things like that and so forth. So that's one of the guiding lights or guiding resources that we'll be using in making the transportation system plan update. There are a whole bunch of details and we're gonna come to in January with uh more information about the TSP update, kind of to continue this long. Erin and I'll also be back with an update about CFAC, which will intermingle with that um as well separately. But I guess the long and the short of it is, is that we have comprehensive plans around these things. We're going to be looking at updating the TSP with an eye towards those comprehensive plan policies. So the good news is that they're already there, they're in the comp plan. And so then that would potentially basically create an additional engagement opportunity to change zoning, subsequently compliant with the transportation system plan update. As I know Counselor Brooks has mentioned this in the past, the idea of integrating the two plans together. And so that's kind of the way in which it would work because just functionally from an engagement and staff and budgetary perspective, we couldn't do them at the same time. So we'd basically layer them on top of each other is the answer.
Okay. Because it goes to partly into my second question is, the frustration the council feels where we have a developer come into town uh who wants to develop a part of our community and, you know, they go look at our development code and it's some of our development code is leftover from the seventies and it comes to bite us in the butt when we don't have that code updated to where our current desire is. For example, with middle housing, that next thing we know, when they were, I think, we're in a land use hearing and the developers citing our own development code as this is all I have to do, I don't care what you guys like, but this is all I have to do. That's one of my, all of our frustrations. And my question is, I know, and you don't have to answer the question tonight, is I want to look forward in our development code, anticipating what's coming and get our future uh counselors, give them some tools that we haven't had, you know, from the hand-me-downs from the seventies. And I'd I'd like our development code to reflect what's coming, not what has happened. I think that's an editorial comment, I guess, really. Uh but that's what I'm looking forward to in the future of these reviews of the comprehensive plan and development code.
Yeah, I think it's a good one. Could I ask you to just expand a little bit more on that thought? Like what?
Well, in our anonymous sunracks.
Yeah.
There was a lot of arm twisting going back and forth, uh what we could ask for and what we couldn't ask for.
Mm-hmm.
Based on our development code. And then we had, you know, with the apartment complex that was proposed, we went through a litany of questions based on, you know, the our development code.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, saying that they're complying with the, with that development code for the land use change. I'd just like to get that cleaned up so that what the commute, the county's, the county, what the council's vision and the city's vision of where our housing will be is in twenty years behind. And it's, it's more current and it's quickly more adaptable to keep up with changes in housing.
I'm just thinking, we were talking about the climate action plan and uh there are a lot of things in that that as we adopt policies from that, that I'd like to see implemented into the development code, like well, Counselor Brooks and her EV charging things on all new construction would be a perfect example. And I don't think it harms anybody to add that and or go add it to their cost. So it's, but it's better for our community overall and it's looking forward and it's gonna be needed anyway in another dozen years.
Uh this is not a critique or anything, it's just matter of just being forward, more forward looking. I mean, Twelton developed quickly. And we're at the point now where, you know, our buildable land for residential is pretty much matched out for, you know, the time being. Um manufacturing industrial is still continuing. Uh but if Metro does expand the UGB or whatever the state's gonna do to us as far as, you know, land use planning and um uh increasing the capacity of housing, that we're at least a little bit ahead and we're not playing catch-up or we have a little bit leverage with home builders and developers more than we do today. And commercial.
Yeah, no, I think that's absolutely fair. Thank you for expanding on your thoughts. And I think when we have our work plan discussion, that's something that we can add as part of that as well.
Yeah, like on Autumn Sunrise, it would have been nice if we were allowed to ask for a little more green space in there. You know, that was a battle to get five percent.
Yeah, and I think that, I mean, you you could have, but they could have also, I mean, they threatened to build what was allowed in the zone and so. But that, but that was a change, right? And so, I mean, I think, I guess what I'm hearing is, is that there's an interest in kind of absent a specific development proposal to
Yeah.
audit the different residential zones and perhaps commercial zones and then come up with like a best practice version of that that's more modernized.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. Anything else? Council Brooks.
So I have a question um as far as visioning goes, because a lot of times um just from coming from a motivational place, carrots are just better than sticks. And so I'm curious about ways that um that these planning documents can reflect uh like incentives or preferences? If there's a way to incentivize different things, um you know, this idea of reflective roofs or whatever can make such a big difference and it can make such a big difference in um so is there a way that we can, you know, think about that? And I don't have, I mean, that's you guys, I don't have what it would be or anything like that. But I'm just curious around how that fits into our planning and code documents. And.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting idea. I mean, I think that that does speak to the mayor's point about the code not necessarily being quite as modern. Where more modern codes do you have, like density bonuses for development of affordable housing or um I heard an example where Portland allows more tree removal on a lot if affordable housing is being provided. Um things like that, or maybe you would allow more lot coverage if you had a reflective roof, for example. I mean, so there are, I think, tools that don't necessarily require an outlay of money, which is a good thing.
I'm sorry, I I'm just going back to the, uh and I probably am not gonna get the terms proper and I'm sorry. So when we pass an ordinance here about something, it doesn't automatically go as a change into the code? You have to do a whole separate code change? Is that correct? Is that what I understand?
Um.
Is that what was being discussed?
Not necessarily. I mean, the ordinance does affect the code change. I mean, there's a like functional thing that happens by the scenes. But the ordinance does affect the code change itself.
Immediately, that's immediate change to the code.
Thirty days. Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I must have misunderstood what I heard. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Other questions? Oh, thank you, Erin and Steve.
Thank you very much, Counselor.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Okay. Now we come seniors, you take back and just uh. Uh next thing up is.
Is my mic on?
Yep. Uh item number three, consideration of ordinance number one four eight two dash twenty-three, permitting to all to municipal code, chapter one dash twenty-one, delegating authority to city manager to approve certain intergovernmental agreements, grants and similar agreements.
Yeah, thank you, Your Honor, members of council. That, that, that's correct. Uh you have for your consideration ordinance fourteen eighty-two dash twenty-three. And this will apply, uh actually expand the manager's authority to approve uh certain intergovernmental agreements or IGAs as well as certain uh grant and loan agreements. And I'll very succinctly as I can go how that really affects uh the city um as far as IGAs. So the expanded manager's authority, uh if this ordinance were approved, the manager uh could approve IGAs that do not exceed uh a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, what's the justification for that? Uh that is, that that mirrors the manager's authority uh for public contracts under our contracting rules. Uh mutual aid agreements for equipment and personnel and involvement in task forces. So that one really, the justification justification for that really speaks to the manager's authority in the charter uh to supervise city uh employees, personnel and city property. And agreements that implement council policy decisions and renewals and extensions of agreements originally approved by council. But justification for that is for those two, the council in some form or fashion has already had eyes on those. And uh when we talk about uh the ability to approve and sign grant and loan agreements uh for which funds are already uh uh included in the budget, uh again, uh that speaks more to the uh manager's authority as uh as the administrative head of the city and more operational in nature. And um this is, all of these changes are similar to what uh cities in the metro region and in Oregon have already. We did look uh uh both myself and Richard Contreras in my office. We looked at the cities of Lake Oswego, we looked at Tiger, we looked at Medford, we looked at Gresham. And a lot of these are similar provisions and authority that the manager uh has in those cities. And so I I guess maybe the major question is, is why? Why would we do this? And I think one uh big reason is uh uh just streamlining processes. It's also uh uh will save significant amounts of staff time, uh even to bring something like this uh for the council review, a very straightforward ordinance. Took a significant amount of time for someone to draft the uh agenda item, to have it uploaded onto municipal code, have it reviewed by numerous city employees and get it to the council for review. And uh so, Your Honor, that's really uh just an overview of what I have as uh the justification for the changes. And I certainly will take any questions that you might have if there's any concerns or questions about uh so delegating uh some significant authority to the manager and not have these agreements uh come to the council first.
Questions for Kevin. President Pratt.
Oh, I guess I'm, I I'm just going through these four. And so the, like the agreements that don't exceed a hundred and fifty, I'm trying to think of examples. Like, would that be like the police in Durham or something like that if it was under the hundred and fifty, like sharing? Would that be like the police in Durham or something like that if it was under the hundred and fifty, like sharing?
Examples of um IGAs that are under a hundred and fifty thousand um. Well, there's a fair number that have zero value.
Right.
That. That have to come before, so for instance, um like uh the the police participating in. Um, the TNT team, tactical negotiations team. Um, as a part of Washington County, so we have to bring that IGA before you, it has no um monetary value. But because it's between two intergover- two government agencies. It has to come here as opposed to me signing it. I can't think of, oh, well, perhaps, um, so our cooperative, so our Public Works Cooperative. Where we share um equipment and um there's some value to that. We have to bring those before you um. We purchase um. That uh the alternative to um to salt, the the sodium.
Yeah, okay.
Um, liquid from Lake Oswego and so that's an agreement that between the two of us and that has to come before you. It's very administrative, um straightforward. But consequently, because it has to come to council, we, you know, it takes two weeks to get on the agenda and then. There's just process associated with it.
Anyway, so my, the only one that I I'm trying to understand the most is the last one, the renewals and extensions of agreements originally approved by council, so. I s- I could see that where it works, but like let's take our public services. If you wanted to extend that and there's no fee increase, would you, would that qualify for that? No, a renewal and extension of agreements originally approved by council.
Yeah, so that would, for instance, the TNT, the the county or the the renewal of or. A different example, um, we have a intergovernmental agreement with the state to um have them uh provide. They they use offices at the at the police department or they did. And um so that's that's like a five-year rolling agreement that has to come back to the council. Even though you approved it the first time.
Okay. I guess I'm only concerned on that last one, if there's some kind of agreement where maybe council wouldn't want it renewed. They're they're probably rare. I can't think of examples here, so.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Thank you. Has there been instances in in the past where this has caused delays uh in assistance or emergencies? Because they couldn't get to council fast enough for approval presentation?
Well, um, I. I don't know specifically about, I don't have an example where it caused a delay, um but um. A few, a number of years ago, I think the mayor was on council then, um, we need, we were applying for a grant. And the timeline for the grant was um. Uh, we had to call a special meeting of the council um so that the council could approve us applying for that grant. And um if the council didn't, wasn't able to meet, then we wouldn't have been able to apply for the grant. We've talked about um certain situations where we're applying for like a federal grant or like some some where we're get. Information kind of last minute and we, if we can't get it in front of council, then we just can't apply for it.
Has in the past the council ever declined any intergovernmental rules? It's so established precedent is pretty much every, each time something's been presented to the board, the council, it's it's gone through.
As far as I know, I don't know of any example where the council, something on on the agenda that the council didn't ultimately approve.
And I will add, I I know there. I've seen in other cities, uh potentially a concern that uh you're not aware, the council would not be made aware of things. And there's a check on that and that's that's the council. Um, I certainly a manager that has a good relationship or wants to keep a good relationship with the council. Will forward IGAs, grant and loan agreements that otherwise uh could be approved at the staff level. And for those to the council, if uh it is a matter of public concern or something that is especially concerning to the council. That's part of what a a manager does as a CEO. And so there is a check there, there's also a check, uh the city attorney is required to approve these as to form, so there there is significant review. Uh, at the staff level.
Wonderful, thank you very much.
Other questions?
Um, just just a bit of clarification, are they similar to like MOUs uh that have like. Some some other organizations use the word MOUs for intergovernment when they. Uh, work with other agencies or that are not your own and then we approve like the executive director to do certain. Up to certain or else it goes to the board. Is that similar? Just so I can understand that.
Yeah, yeah, councillor, th- this ordinance specifically states there's a provision i- in the ordinance that uh. This ordinance will will apply not only to intergovernmental agreements, but similar agreements like memorandums of understandings and memorandums of agreement.
Yeah, we've always been advised with Kevin and prior city attorneys that. Whatever it's called, whether that's a memorandum of understanding, a memorandum of agreement, if it's between two. Um, government agencies, it has to come before you.
Other questions? Council Brooks.
Um, I I just, my concern is um that I don't think that. A dollar amount is necessarily what. Constituents are always the most concerned about. So as far as prioritizing what public information people have to read about. What our government's doing and with other governments when it gets to the place where we're funding. Um, or not funding, um, I'm kind of like the transparency that it has. Where it gives us. The opportunity to look at what we're doing. And I guess my thing is there's content, like contentious things, like even if this IGA that we pulled off today. Was a hundred and fifty instead of a hundred and seventy-five, there could be something that goes through. Um, that that we wouldn't know about, that so we would have to keep their finger on the ball and they would have to be like. Reading our minds and our emails about what people are particularly worried about. So that that's my thing is I just don't know um. Around transparency of of what we're doing and what we're sharing with the public. Um, one of the nice things about our agenda, in my opinion, is that it gives opportunity for any community member. To take a look at what we're doing instead of making up a story about what we're not doing and. In my mind, some of the most contentious things, that it can get into that. Um, until it's really a flushed out conversation and it doesn't, you know. If it was that or something about marijuana or something about, um, there's just all kinds of different ones. And I a lot of times don't know which ones they're gonna be until they're on the agenda and people start writing it. So that's my, I think that our community is used to having a conversation with us and so. That's my concern about this and how would we? Make that information transparent to the public and so that people know what we're going on, what's going on.
I totally get that point and I don't know what Kevin's um response is to it and I. Honestly, like I, we can, we've been um proceeding the way we've been proceeding for as long as I've been here, so. Um, this isn't the hill that I'm gonna die on, but there are a lot of things that the manager does organizationally. That does not have transparency to the, I mean, it could have transparency to the public, but it. It doesn't, it doesn't reach the light of 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 an agenda. For instance, um, on the current city manager's listserv, there's a whole discussion about um. About uh bank records of being on council agendas and a fair number of mostly smaller cities. Put their bank reconciliation records, the council has to approve them every two weeks. And like every check that goes out, the council gets to approve and. And there was, there was like scratching their heads heads about that, it's like, really, is that that what the council's role is? To review the bank reconciliation statements? And um so there's been some discussion about that and I I would say that. You hire a manager to run the organization and carry out the policies and goals that that you um put forward. And there's a fair, there's a ton of work that happens behind the scenes that that. I would argue that you don't wanna or need to worry, you know, take up your brain space with. And it's just the question of the level of of what you wanna see, but again, I'm not arguing. That it, and pounding my fist on the table that this has to happen and I know Kevin's not either. Um, it it would be an efficiency and I kind of equate it to, the mayor and I were talking a little bit about this on Friday. That um when the council went through the um delegation of authority to the planning commission. To um do conditional use permits and variances and um. And that did take it off of the council agenda and put it kind of buried it in a con- in the in the planning commission. But it was an efficiency factor and um it 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 has worked out very well.
Anyway, and and I I um. I don't look at this with you or, you know, whatever city manager it would be and um. And not like that, but my my concern just as a decision maker is especially the people that really track our meetings. How different would our consent um approval be every week? Are we asking the community if this is what they want? I don't really, it has, for me, it doesn't have to do with the number, it has to do with information and what's important to constituents, so. The the those are my my concerns and I don't know if there's. And I do think that we enjoy as our city a very good relationship with our constituents. We are way different than a lot of other cities and in my mind, I think part of it has to do with the fact that people can come. And talk to us about any of these items that show up, I think it helps be a pressure valve, so that's just my concern with. Relational. Engagement.
I I'm just wondering if um. In general, I totally get the efficiency of this and um my qualms. We have a great city manager, but we might not in twenty years and you know, there have been issues with other city managers. So and and it's the transparency to council, so I'm wondering if there's some way, not maybe in all these things. But unlike the extension, the one I'm on, the extension of the agreements and maybe some of the other agreements that are, you know, not if. You're gonna do the little things, but that maybe there's just like a little update, like. Just saying, these agreements were signed and someone can add, they don't have to have any detail really, just say. We had, we signed an agreement with this bullet point and that a council member could ask more if they wanted to, to the city manager, but. You know, that there's not a lot of time spent on it on your part. It's just an idea to kind of.
Other questions, comments?
Well, I guess when I initially looked at this, I, because I also. Run an agency, I, this makes complete sense to me, I don't, I I I um. I I don't see any reason why this would be a problem. And I hear my fellow councillors' concern about transparency and that had not crossed my mind. Um, a- and I think um. You, I I guess I don't have a strong feeling either way, like I'm not trying to be, um, like. I can, this makes complete sense to me. Uh, a- and and I see, I hear it as a standard operating procedure for other cities, that other cities with, that are equally, if not more. Complex uh uh and enjoy a great relationship with their constituents, so I'm not sure I under. So I I I guess I feel good about it and um I would defer to my fellow councillors.
Other questions? In total honesty, honesty, I would vote against this. Um, haven't been here so long, I've enjoyed seeing these things on consent. Cause there have been things that have been pulled. Uh, early when I was a councillor, that get pretty hot during when it was pulled off consent. It was eventually resolved, but it was quite a bit of debate, I agree with councillor Brooks about uh transparency. Uh, yes, we'll get efficiency, but uh some of these things. When they, when I read them, I dig into them, look and look at them because it might come back to, you know, people might ask us about this. Um, and to me, it it's. Given the, you know, it it might be inefficient, but this gives the city council. Uh, pretty much a decent awareness of what's going on, of course, like Cheryl is saying, it's not everything. But these are the things that we might hear about, uh, for example, I'll pick on item number three, maybe some people didn't like that we were gonna rename Stone Ridge Park. Uh, but that that would never came to us if it was under consent. Uh, we did discuss it, we knew it was coming back, uh, we had a public comment about it, but you know, there, we could have got some late breaking. Folks who didn't like it, so to me, I'd rather leave it the way it was, it is, again, like was brought up. Not that Cheryl would do that, but I read every, every few months of a city manager getting turfed. From cities lately in Oregon because of things they've done, um, or mayors getting turfed. Things they've done, so I I, my opinion is I would leave it as is, but. Uh, in order for this to move forward, someone would have to make a motion in a second and vote on it, so. Then we got one more item, people are choosing to go, but we got one more item after this, Council Brooks.
Can I just say one more thing to add on to your point, I um, I'm all about efficiency and effectiveness and. Um, at the same time, there's a thing about the democratic process and this is about information. And especially this is one we're making agreements with other government entities, um, and to me, that is one of those. Um, pieces of democracy where you get the community to see. And to me, that just really engenders trust and continues to have the conversations be fact-based. Instead of made up things, which happens when things go underground oftentimes, I find.
And just remembered, cause Sharon mentioned it, back when, again, back when I was a young councillor. Uh, when we were going through the process of splitting, you know, what would the city council be responsible for and what the planning commission would be responsible for? That went over a period of four or five different meetings. It was very extracting because council did not want to give up power. And so it was going through the wringer to figure out what would happen, so it wasn't a a ten or fifteen minute discussion. Um, so just FYI, that 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 was not an easy one to do and it was, it took a while to do that.
Your Honor, I I will note under the council rules, the council does have the authority right now to refer this back to the manager if there were any one of these. Uh, criteria that they were interested in in uh supporting and seeing in an ordinance. You don't have to accept all, you could accept one or two or none.
One of the things Cheryl and I talked about is kicking this to a work session, so we're not talking about it nine thirty at night. And maybe go into that process of what would be acceptable and what would not. Uh, and fine tuning it in the idea, you know, with the goal of being efficient, but be also being transparent.
I wanna say one other thing too, because I think too with my experience um with different council members. Um, it wasn't always the majority opinion, but allowed for a minority opinion to be talked about, I can't remember how many times. Um, one particular councillor took things off consent so that they could talk about something that they felt very passionate about. And they were not the only person in our community that felt passionate that way about that, um. And I think there's just something about that, it's not efficient all the time on the front end. But long term, it can be very efficient because the conversations and concerns are raised in the front end instead of. I think that when people don't know stuff, a lot of times they'll fill in the blanks with negative things and um. And I particularly would rather have the conversation than be blindsided and especially, like we all just, we just. Like we all just, we just do this, you know, like I'd rather have the conversations than be blindsided.
So what's the? I mean, is anyone gonna make a motion? No, to, to move the ordinance? If not, any other choices, we direct Sherilyn to put this on the agenda for a future work session for further.
There might be things in here that make a lot of sense.
Acceptable? What? Alright, alright.
You know, perhaps we do some work keeping track of what would have, what would come before you and what wouldn't and. We have some additional data.
Sounds good, Gonzalez, you have your hand up, or?
I was gonna put a motion to pass this resolution and I was gonna ask for a second.
Right.
Um, still because. It, it's established precedence throughout cities and I understand that we said mayor about, there's been, city managers have been sacked and, and mayors and I totally get that. But it is, it is, it is, it is when the authority of a, of a managing manager for a city, and so I feel confident in, in reviewing this and. It's okay, so you're not gonna hang yourself to die on, on this one thing, I mean, this is just trying to be efficient. I mean, it, we were just talking about earlier how. Even our city, um, city engineers are overwhelmed and, and then to continue to add. Intragovernmental agreements, I think the other cities would also be due due diligence as ours would be as well and, and so I would be for just um. Authorizing this to go through for efficiency, it's been many years, so that's my opinion. So I, I put the motion, I guess is that correct? Am I, is that correct?
You make a motion to adopt.
Make a motion to adopt.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that because agreed with um, when you run an organization, you, you, there's some things that you can um. That you, you don't, for efficiency and I, and I trust that by the time that we get the information as well. But I, I'll second that because I, I do think that there are some things that the city manager can completely execute and do. Based on, on what? Do you think would be a good thing for the city?
Alright, so I have a motion of second to adopt ordinance number one four eight two dash twenty-three. Is this roll call? Is this, forget? Okay.
It's on one night.
Alright, so you have to make a motion, we still gotta re, redo the motion?
This will be first reading by title only.
So comes from Gonzalez, you're back up to.
I, motion for reading by title only. Okay, so ordinance number one four eight two dash twenty-three, amendment to all municipal code, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I have a motion second for first reading by title only, uh, ordinance one four eight two dash twenty-three. Uh, that's just a roll call, so Councilor Gonzalez. Councilor Brooks.
Aye.
Councilor Hillier.
Aye.
Councilor Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye also.
Ordinance number fourteen eighty-two dash two-three and ordinance amending to Walton Municipal Code, chapter one dash two-one, delegating authority to the city manager to approve certain intergovernmental agreements, grants and similar agreements.
Motion for second reading.
Okay, uh, second reading, consideration of. Consideration of ordinance number one forty-two dash twenty-three, amendment to all municipal code. By title only.
Yes, thank you.
I have a motion second for second reading, uh, ordinance number one forty-two dash twenty-three. Uh, Councilor Hillier.
Aye.
Councilor Reyes.
Yes.
Councilor Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilor Brooks.
Aye.
Council President Pratt.
Aye.
Chair votes aye also.
Ordinance number fourteen eighty-two dash two-three and ordinance amending to Walton Municipal Code, chapter one dash two-one, delegating authority to the city manager to approve certain intergovernmental agreements. Grants and similar agreements. Now the motion for.
Bring it home.
What, okay, so uh, motion to adopt ordinance number one four eight two dash twenty-three, amending to all municipal code.
I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number one four eight two dash twenty-three. Councilor Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilor Brooks.
Nay.
Councilor Hillier.
I vote nay, I think it needs to be further developed.
Councilor Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Pratt.
No.
The chair votes no also, uh, so based on the feedback, uh, this ordinance has failed tonight. It can be brought back in two weeks, but we might just wanna move this to a work session item.
Amen.
Alright, we're in the home stretch here, people. Alright, so we had item removed from consent. It was uh, item number four, consideration of resolution number five seven three five dash twenty-three. Authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with Washington County to include design of a trail connection. And water line in the design of the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension Project. Thank you, Kim and Mike for hanging in there.
Barely. Kim McMillan, Community Development Director, and I have Mike McCarthy, our city engineer, here with me tonight. He and I have both been at the table with Washington County collaborating on this project and the items that are in this agreement. Um, our, our opportunity to get them designed at a cost that's much, much lower than if we went out and there's some other alternatives, so I'm gonna turn it over to Mike to talk about the item.
Uh, good evening, just for the record, I'm Mike McCarthy, I'm the city engineer here, and yes, I did turn my microphone on. And um, I think one of the important things to understand with this agreement is it is neutral about whether the road and the bridge gets built. Uh, but if it does. So this agreement is to include in its design, the extension of a city water line. Uh, across the bridge and then a connection to a planned city trail and the trail would run along the canyon. If the bridge does go forward, uh, it would be far more efficient for the city to have the water line on the bridge, to have a connection to the trail be built with it. I think other alternatives would get into much more expensive kinds of construction. So uh, this includes design of the line with the county's work to design the bridge, which the county is planning to do. Uh, and includes the design of the trail connection with the county's design of the bridge. And there's a number of factors that, like the way the bridge gets designed could actually preclude a trail connection from the way that we would want it to be made. Um, if it's not really considered and thought through in the design process. So we think it's far more efficient if the bridge does go forward to have it include the water line in the trail.
I, I did speak with uh, Brian Ginter, our water engineer with consort about alternatives to this. Um, and so what we're proposing is a water line from Boones Ferry to Graham's Ferry, those are the streets with my hands. Um, and when it gets to the bridge structure, they have to design it to hold that water line full of water. Usually there's a sleeve, a pipe. And then the other pipe runs through it and it's got certain hangers and things on it, so um, I said. I think the alternative is we would trench and then bore under the creek, so we would disturb a lot of that natural area with. The water line when we can just attach it to their structure. Also, the permitting that's taking place for their design work. For the sensitive area is a big deal. In fact, they didn't wanna include the trail beyond a certain limit because they had already gotten approvals. So far in the steps that they were in, so we would have to go and get all of those permits through the different agencies if we didn't include it in their project.
Questions for Mike and Kim, Councilor Brooks.
Thank you for hanging out. Um. I'm fine with the trail. I'm concerned about the water and part of it for me is, there's a couple of things that was brought up. And I, I wanna be really clear too about this, is that people are very concerned, so I don't wanna, I'm not trying to be um, whatever, like. Um, but I, I just, part of, part of the concerns and the environmental studies and things that I've seen. And that people have brought to me is the fact that this is like a subduction zone. So if we were gonna have a major earthquake, it would just like. Be a very bad place, so I don't know if that's a great place for water. That's one concern. And then my other question, I guess, is um. In my mind, this thing's a monolith and really expensive and I don't know if it's ever gonna get built. And I'm curious around how quickly we need to get water over there and what is our plan B and. I'd like to see it, you know, it's like if this just sort of showed up on consent, this is exactly the kind of stuff that we were talking about. And I don't, I don't know um, what the timeline we, they need water by is, I don't know what plan B is. I, I don't, I don't understand this at all, I haven't seen one drawing or, so that's my, those are my cou- couple of questions for you.
Okay, so plan B, that's the one going through the creek, or we could go down to Day Road using right of, rights of way. And the timing, we aren't sure because it's gonna be developer-driven, you know, when they come in. Uh, council just saw the zone change for the Basalt Creek Employment Area. And we expect to see an application probably within the next year. It takes so much time to get them in the door. So I'm not sure that there's a demand today, but with this particular IGA. It's fifty-seven thousand dollars invested in the design and then we have it if they go forward with the bridge. The trail, I, I get that that one's easy, easier. But it is a very small investment today for something that may happen, and if it doesn't happen, it's still just a very small investment. So we don't know the timing of when we'll actually need the water, but it's in the water master plan and so we're trying to also be cognizant of that.
The final one, um, I, I think that those options are important to understand for myself and I also, I wouldn't wanna see um. This be used as a linchpin argument for the bridge. So I think that it's a really important conversation to have and I'd like to have more of a conversation.
Other questions? President Pratt.
Well, so I, I need to understand like um, are, is Washington County moving forward with this design process and spending, do they have funding to move forward with the design process?
They do.
Okay, so they are moving forward with the design process, cause um, and I know it's a small amount of money, but my, one of my concerns is that. Um, you know, we're kinda short-staffed in some departments and it, that's like two people. And it, even though it's a small cost, that it's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, so, and I get that it may be a long-term good thing. But um, my concern is that um. I know this is on the MSTIP list of projects, but I don't think it's a priority and we already know Washington County's gonna kinda raid that fund. So I don't see this being built anytime soon, most likely, so as we develop um, over on Hundred Twenty-Fourth there. Are, are we just gonna ignore our water needs until this bridge gets built? Cause it could be a long time.
No, we're doing other things like the reservoir, that there'll be a project coming up on our C, CIP list. I think it's already on there, isn't it?
It is.
The B, the B-level reservoir.
So I guess my question is like, say it's fifteen years from now and we have it really built out and we need water over there and that bridge is still on the long. Distance list, what do you do at that point?
I think we pursue crossing the creek then.
At that point?
Yeah, right, right. It's not the desirable route, I'd rather hang it on the bridge and the, I forgot about your subduction zone question, I'm sorry about that.
Yeah, that's a good.
But the bridge also has to be designed to withstand that, not just a water line, and if it goes in the ground, we have to look at the same things, so. We'd have to do it either way.
Okay, and then this, this, this funds in addition to the half million we've committed to the.
Right, right.
But. You're just saying it's because they're doing the design.
Right.
And then my other question, I guess, would be, I get that, but then if it is, say twenty or twenty-five years from now, aren't they gonna redesign it at that point?
Well, they, they may, I, yeah, that's always a risk as well, but the design that they're heading towards, I mean. I, I believe Clean Water Service has even asked to hang a sewer line on that bridge, so as we're all at the table working together. We're trying to point out here the needs for Tuawalton, we need to get a water line across the canyon. We also would like our trails to connect because when we first sat at the table with them. They, it just went from Graham's to Boones and you would be looking at a trail down there, but you couldn't get there and so we've. Asked them to add that component as well, so I think that that's the collaborative effort that goes into it and the design costs aren't that.
So what, I, I don't, I, I guess I'm confused about the trail, I'm sorry, but we were gonna have nice wide um. Multimodal kinda lanes on that bridge, so where would the trail be?
Uh, so the bridge would be going across the canyon.
Correct.
The eventual uh, trail plan is along the canyon for the trail.
So it's like that's to the bridge.
And the connection and then there would be a connection from the bridge down to the trail.
And that costs.
So, so I think the, one of the other key points is um, this isn't the only way that we can get sea level water to that particular. Area of the city, but it's important for a complete system for it to be looped. So that instead of just having it be a dead end, sort of one way of getting there, it makes for much better operations. There are other ways. That it could be served if this doesn't go through, uh, but it's not as good as having the kind of loop that this would offer.
So you basically, this is the most efficient way to, especially in the water to.
Right, this would be the most efficient way to get the water.
Okay.
Councilor Gonzalez.
So this is ve- very good looking out and I think we all understand that the bridge possibly may not get built and to some of your questions, Council President Pratt about. Whatever's the homes come before the bridge, obviously we would adjust then and get the water out there, but should the bridge be built, we wanna be at that table to say, put this on there now. Before any huge collaboration planning happens, don't forget about Tuawalton that we want water there, should the bridge come first before the other way around, so it's just a contingency. In a sense, I'm for that. It's, it's just smart planning. Sure, there's probably some more questions that gotta be answered, but in general, I, I agree with the concept. If the bridge is gonna be built and that, and that's first. Then we'll look at the studies for the pipe to be on that bridge and I'm, I'm okay with that, cause that's good looking out. So now I'm thinking, have a question, more so I guess as support.
Right.
Councilor Brooks.
I had a clarifying question. We talked about the amount that we're already contributing as, as a city, was it, was it five hundred thousand or nine hundred thousand? Five, okay.
Well, there is five hundred thousand dollars um, in a line in the urban, the Basalt Creek Urban renewal district. That's for transportation and specifically uh, as a contribution to the bridge, but we don't have five hundred thousand. At this point, this would come out of um, both water and parks um, development.
Other questions? I think folks have brought up very good points, but I'm kinda like. Councilor Gonzalez, uh, I'd rather get the planning done now, knowing that uh, one of my aims tonight was the future of MISTIP. And the county's need to cut the MISTIP twenty-three to twenty-eight project list down tremendously. Um, that they frankly don't have the money to spend on these projects. And that when we went to DC, the county took the bridge project off their list. I mean, so the county's not even really advocating for construction anymore, just finishing the design phase of this. Um, so as was mentioned, this bridge is not coming anytime soon, but if it does come fifteen, twenty years from now, at least the planning's there that they can look at. Maybe have to tweak, but at least it's been done and um. The considerations we want are part of the plan versus us, you know, being overrun by Washington County and not having the things we want in this plan. Do I have a motion or no to? Yeah, sure.
Um, thanks for everyone's consideration. I just, my concerns are still um, there as far as um. Putting money into something that there's no budget for and planning for something that might never. Putting money into something that there's no budget for and planning for something that might never happen. And, um, and by the time it happens, that we'd spend money again to put in the design again. So to me, it feels really redundant, and I would never want it to also be the reason to force, um, someone's hand around it. So respectfully, but I just wanna say that.
Not cuz eventually. The land, the land on the Clackamas side of I five, we all know eventually will get developed. It's not part of the UGB yet, but Metro's eyeing it, uh, and who knows when that's gonna happen? And this is a key part of that process of connecting that area to Tuolton and the rest of Metro area would be, would be this bridge. I like it or not, but that's way down the road at this point, but I'd rather have it in the plan versus not. It might be one of those that sits on a shelf for a while, someone dusts it off a future engineer, maybe our new engineer, and takes a look at it. But let's get it in there now, um, and, uh, support the county on this. Even though we all, uh, are pretty much aware this bridge isn't gonna happen, well, at least any of us were on council. Uh, it's gonna be way out there. And it's, with the county's budget situation, yeah, it's, we're gonna, the, the countywide, they're talking about maybe ten projects for the whole county. So there's no money. Do I have a motion to, uh, adopt that resolution?
I'll put the motion forward, adopt resolution number five seven three five dash twenty-three. Authorize, no, is that the correct one?
Yep.
Authorize the city manager to execute into government agreement in Washington County. Do I need to read more, or?
That's good.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion, a second to adopt resolution fifty-seven thirty-five dash twenty-three, authorizing the city manager to execute an IGA with Washington County. This one I know is a voice vote. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Say.
So is it three, two? Okay, it's, it's, uh, adopted. Three, two.
Two, were you, I, she was an I.
Yeah.
I, I.
These two already know.
Okay.
Three, two.
Four, four.
Four, two, I can't see. It's too late. Yeah, alright, four, two. It's where Nicole's supposed to be going like this. Alright, it, it's a document of four ayes and two nays. Alright. Alright, that brings us back to Council Roundtable. Uh, let's go ahead and answer with Council Gonzalez.
Yes, give me, uh. My notes, I'm sorry about that. There you go. Um, I attended several community events, um. So I attended the Mid, the Midwest CIO, that was a very nice, I think, attendance, and it was very nice that, to be there. And I'd like to attend probably more just to get around, so that was very nice to see. Um, I attended the Heritage Center, that was also very nice, amazing that that place has been there that long. The Veterans Breakfast was very touching as, you know, talking and grouping and huddling with various veterans. And, and seeing different, um, forces, the army, uh, it was just so touching. Almost teary touching to hear them talk about their story, and instantly a certain seriousness comes about them, and you can just tell it's holding back that, those passions. And it was just very special. It's just very special bringing them together. I had a, I had a veteran guest, well, it was nice to introduce him to. Uh, other veterans, the, so that he's not alone, cuz he's also struggling with, um, just struggling with, with his service. And getting around mature, older veterans was very nice, and he spent a lot of time, I, I think after I left, he still hung out, and, and I think some connections. So it was very, very nice. Um, the last one is, the, attended the Las Casitas Neighborhood Association and, and hearing their concerns. It was very interesting because, you know, I, I remember as a kid growing up in a, I guess. Tough, little bit tough neighborhood, neighborhood similar like Las Casitas. And each time a police officer come out, we know, you kinda get a little bit scared, like, hopefully they didn't see me. It's just, it's just those kinds of things. And in this neighborhood, I, I sense that, I sense that, um, that they, they need, they need enforcement, they need help. I mean, after we met that day, I went the following day and walked the community with my children, and just to see what they're seeing and their perspective. And it was fine, but it is definitely quite overrun with garbage and carelessness. And even so much so that I, I think I saw signs and a bunch of chairs of somebody selling food, like a service business there in Las Casitas. Sign was up, all the chairs were all folded up and leaned up against the house. Obviously, that's probably not allowed to, to, to be selling food. Um, so, so there's a lot there, and in, and there'll be more talks to, to, to talk to people. But we were very clear with them in that meeting that they have to show up and, 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 and cite their complaints anonymously. We provided that information to them. Also, re, re, um, also mentioned to them the appearance of a city coming down and putting the hammer down. My, lack of my word, um, of enforcing code on mi- minority low-income homes. It does not look good. And obviously, that's, that's scary to, to cities and, and police and everybody else, and how that may look like. But they're asking for it big time, and, and they've cited specific violations on safety. Uh, the, the very one that stands out to me is when the car, when the trash, pe- people have to pick up the trash. There, there's so many cars that they have to put the trash on the, on the left side, on the, which is onto the street more. So when the trash truck goes to go pick the trash, it almost blocks pass, passivity. And there's been so many frustrations that cars will go around that trash truck and almost hit people trying to cross because of the trash dumping, of course, is natural part. So there, there's a lot happening there, and this is probably just the beginning of more conversations to have, and what type of enforcement do they have? They ask that the city sent to all the landlords, you know, to enforce their tenant, tenant rights. Which is keep your place, the certain basic livability codes that one has to enforce, have the landlord enforce those with their tenants judiciously. But also code enforcement on the backend, trying to enforce a little bit, and then the community themselves in the middle sandwich reporting these things. So if there was some kind of collaboration that we can work towards that end in the future, they're asking for it. And typically, no one's going in there and doing this, but they, they're coming hypothetically asking to enforce. Give a couple of tickets, you know, the couple of tickets may be enough just to put the message out there that, hey, the city's gonna start enforcing, let's kinda clean ourselves up. Maybe we lay it back, but I don't know what the strategy is around this. I don't know how cities a- approach this, especially, um, with these new terms being turned around. These, um, social justice terms where we're no longer enforcing. You know, we're gonna have Portland crime creep into Tuolton because we're afraid to enforce. I'm not saying this is what's happening. But the constituents in that street are asking for enforcement. And so what do we do? I guess this is probably something that we can talk about in the future as we continue to meet with the residents in that neighborhood. Uh, but there is some low-hanging fruit there, and that person selling food or connecting business sales is probably not allowed. I don't think it's allowed officially. So anyways, I'll, I'll close with that. Thank you.
Council Brooks.
Alright, I'm gonna start just with the, the pad meeting, um, which was Thursday. I'll tell you the date in a minute. But I wanted to mention that the home our supportive services were approved. And Family Promise of Tuolton Valley, um, received four hundred ninety, ninety thousand dollars. Of what they asked for. The only other applicant was Family Promise of Greater Washington County. And they also, um, received some funding, a hundred and fifty thousand. Of two hundred and eighty thousand that they asked for, and they're gonna bump it up with a little bit of home, too, just to balance it out. They were both really super competitive, so they went ten thousand dollars down from the request for Family Promise of Tuolton Valley. But it was a important conversation. The other thing is there were, um, asking for help with talking about home improvement. Um, grants that are available through the county, so they're supposed to send us some information, and I'll pass it along to, um, Sherilyn. And, and however, um, people would like to hear about that, let me know. And then, so I was also with the council, I, I did the council update for the Midwest CIO, which is the one that I live at. And it was really great to see, um, my neighbors and talk about all the things that we've been up to as a council. So, um, and it was nice to see you there, Council Gonzalez. And we also, um, I, I also attended the Tuolton Historical Society Membership Luncheon. And celebrated, uh, Council, Council President Pratt's birthday. And had a nice talk with our wonderful city manager. Um, and then finally, I also too wanted to say something about the Veterans Day Breakfast. It's such a touching and moving. Breakfast every year in celebration of our veterans. I wanted to say thank you to the mayor, not only for your service, but for always doing such a great job. And I was saying to the mayor before that, um, after he turns out, he can't stop being the master ceremonies for the Veterans Breakfast. He just does such a wonderful job.
I have a problem with that.
And, um, we missed, uh, Dale Potts, but, um, and I don't know if you've heard from him, but I hope he's doing okay. And I just wanted to know that we missed him. And also, um, I wanted to also give a shout out to, um, Ross Hoover. Who talked about, uh, the Veterans Plaza and the parks, and he just did an amazing job. And then I also wanna say thank you to Ross Baker, too, for doing a great job at the membership luncheon. That's all I got. Thanks.
That's LaHillier.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, so I attended the Architectural Review Board meeting, uh, only to have it rescheduled to December thirteenth. So I'll miss you all at your event on December thirteenth, but we have lots, lots hopping, uh, on that meeting. And, um, I did wanna just bring up that on Friday night, uh, at Hillsborough Stadium, seven PM. The Tuolton High School football team will be playing in the semifinals against Sherweed, Sherwood, I mean. And so go Wolves. I'm really excited, um, for the Wolves, so if you can make it out there, rain or shine, please do. How much is it to get in, chief? Ten bucks, ten bucks. It's worth the entertainment. Some popcorn, a burger. I also wanna, uh, throw out a, a cheer for the cross-country teams. They participated in state. There are a lot of really, um, excellent athletes, uh, male, uh, female, both. Uh, we had the individual cheer competitions, and several Tuolton athletes were recognized, uh, I think first, third, and fourth for quite a few of them. The men's and women's water polo team both made it to the state championships. I didn't apologize follow any further than that. And I'm sure there are other great things that are happening in this world, and so I think it's important as we move into the Thanksgiving. Time of year that we realize that there are a lot of things to celebrate. So I just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Council Reyes.
Yeah, November sixth, I, um, we had our council committee assignment, uh, interviews. And we had, I think we had about fourteen people and only six spots open. So it's hard just selecting people, but, uh, we just, the beauty of all that is that we also got to meet a lot of new people. You think you know people, then all of a sudden, there are these people that have lived here for twenty-plus years, and they have been active or doing other things. And, and it's just like wonderful to, to see that. Um, so it was, it was a great, great time, um, getting to know people. And, and obviously, not everybody gets to be assigned to a committee, but I do encourage everyone out there. That continue, um, to find a spot in, in one of these committees. Or even volunteering at any of our city opportunities. So don't, don't give up. Um, we need two, uh, two commit, we need to have two more for the core committee. So if you're out there and you own a business or work or live in the core area within Tuolton. Please, um, fill out an application, apply. We are looking for, uh, your voice. As we move forward, uh, with things that are happening in the future. And, um, such as parking, it's a big deal. And we noticed that with the, uh, pumpkin regatta, there was, um, there, we could have probably improved things better. So if you're, uh, if you're out there and you are hearing this call to action, please go ahead and, uh, sign up. And reach out to the city. Um, I just wanna make a, a bit of a comment with what Council Gonzalez has said. I have attended to many of the Casitas, um, meetings, or, uh, I don't know why we call it Las Casitas, but it's more mostly. Tualatinos or Tuolton, uh, the Latino community from Tuolton. And, um, it's, it makes me proud to see them, that they come and voice their opinion, because it is not easy that, you know. I know them very well, how hard they work, and they still make it to a meeting because they wanna voice their opinion. Um, and I support, I support whatever they, they are requesting. They, it's not, it hasn't been just one meeting. It's been years of the same communication, the same requests that they're asking. And it may not be something super big, but it could be at least helping with the parking. You know, that can, that will relieve a lot of the situation and, and make it a little cleaner and, and, and feel pride in the area that they live. Um, I know that if, that will be in another part of the community of Tuolton, people will be upset about what goes on there. So I know we wanna be sympathetic and all that, but at the same time, um, just, there are codes that we have. And if we can follow those, that will be wonderful. And it'll make them think that also, feel that we're listening to them, and, you know, bringing them every so often to these meetings. And then they tell us time and over again the same requests, and then we just ignore it. Doesn't really look good either. So just thought I, I mentioned that. Um, and, um, I do care for the community, and I, I really care for them, but, you know, we, we gotta start listening to what they're saying. Thank you.
That's President Pratt.
I attended a lot of events with other councillors, so, um, the Historical Society Lunch, which is great. And then, um, the Veterans Breakfast, and every year, there's just so many amazing stories and people you meet there. And it, it, we're really, um, blessed, I guess, to have so many great veterans in our community. And then the Council on, um, Advisory Appointments, and we had, um, most of the people were, um, the Architectural Review Board and the Budget Committee. And then, um, I attended the Drug Takeback Event at the police station. And, um, the other thing I wanted to talk about is the Police Foundation. We implemented a new program called Cops Care, and we've, um, thanks to Chief Pickering, who let us know that the, the police officers are actually. Going out there and people are in need, and they're, they're using their own money to help them, whatever way, food or shelter. So we, we started a program where we give each officer, um, fifty dollars in cash, um, to spend at their discretion. And we just asked that they let us know how they spent it. That's it.
Cool, alright. Um. Halloween, it was fun at the library with the Dancearama. Uh, kids from zero to six, uh, came. It was definitely several hundred, cuz I was very sore going up and down kneeling. And cuz I was the guy with the toy ducks with wheels that everybody wanted. I wanna thank, uh, Sarah and Jerry Ann, it was very well attended. People had a very good time. I never got to the Dancearama part, but I heard parents saying, you don't wanna go in there. It's all chaos. Um, on the third, I mentioned before, we had a meeting with Triment, uh, to discuss the route changes here in Tuolton and the surrounding area. The focus of the conversation was, um, the proposed change to Route Ninety-Six that would no longer be expressed to Portland. The problem they're seeing is a lack of ridership, and what they're trying to do is get more people on buses. So the way to do that is to take them off the expressway and put them through the neighborhoods. Uh, but I've got a lot of folks who are kinda angry about that because, you know, they're used to the Ninety-Six, gets them to Portland quickly. Um, the suggestion from Triment is that they're gonna change the route of Seventy-Six. Uh, so Seventy-Six will eventually end up at Barbara Boulevard, um, Park and Ride. And they are anticipating possibly, at that point, people will transfer to an express bus to get them into Portland. But it's all about getting, uh, butts in seats right now for Triment. Um, and, uh, they recognize that, yes, Ninety-Six is popular, but, um, they're making changes with Seventy-Six. Uh, that we like, you know, our east-west service, um, and they're gonna have a little bit more service on Ninety-Nine W. But the price we're paying for that is losing that express bus. I asked if this could be looked at again, uh, in the event tolling is implemented. We're gonna have to have an alternative for folks to get to Portland who don't wanna pay tolling. Uh, they said certainly that, uh, if, if a tolling does occur, that can have impacts all across our system. Uh, additional folks wanting to ride the bus, uh, as an alternative to tolling. Um, I already talked about the metro thing with Republic, uh, that presentation I sent you. Already talked about the metro thing with Republic, that presentation I sent you about their change for regional waste facilities. Jason mentioned, they were perplexed, Metro mayors were complex, perplexed. I don't know how they're deciding this in December when no one really knows what direction they're going in, what's it gonna cost? So stay tuned for that. On the eighth, I had a meeting with Monique Clairborne of GPI, Greater Portland Inc., along with Mayor Rosner, on revamping the Small Cities Consortium. We're seeing a little bit of a lack of attendance lately and wanna reinvigorate, reinvigorate it so that all the cities that are a part of the consortium start to attend in the meetings again and take advantage of their membership in Greater Portland Inc. I went through my GMRS training on that day with Brian. I actually was at the roll call last night, listening, because I told him I wasn't gonna say a word until I figure out how it works. But they did the roll call last night. So this is the CERT program where those folks with the GMRS training can just basically do a roll call at eight-thirty on Sundays, check in, making sure your radios are working, that we all can communicate. It was pretty kinda, it was pretty good. Just for those other, I know other two other councils took the training. They have canceled the Christmas Eve one and the New Year's Eve one. Wonder why? Is anybody out there? Exactly. Veterans Breakfast, I want a big shout out for Sarah and Marilyn. They did a terrific job organizing that. Also wanna thank Rotary and Dave Dalton for doing all the cooking of the breakfast, as well as the volunteers from Lamb, who served everybody. And what? That's Kiwanis, oopsie. The Kiwanis, it was Rotary. Okay, Kiwanis. It's Kiwanis, okay, Kiwanis did it. Sorry Rotary, taking the credit away from you. And the Lamb, the Lamb folks did a great job getting the food out. And I, finally, the table sponsors who helped pay for it. Today was the Washington County Coordinating Committee meeting. We discussed the Trimet slash Metro's plan, the TV Highway Express Bus Plan. Basically, we go from Cornelius to Beaverton. This thing has been in the works for years. It's a high-demand route. I guess it's the fifth most popular route for Trimet. It serves communities of color, it serves communities of poverty. But it also would cost five hundred and fifty million dollars to improve that one line on TV Highway. Because what they need to do is put additional bus pull-ups, pull-offs. They want to do an express bus. And they want the bus, when you load the bus, you're at bus level for ADA compliance. Of course, everyone's like, where are you getting that kind of money? The local match of that would probably be around a hundred and twenty million dollars. Yeah. So they're looking for maybe ways to cut costs on it, but this thing continues on. Of course, the big challenge there is railroad tracks. On the side of TV Highway, they have a forty-foot right-of-way on each side, which eats up a lot of space of the bus. Some bus stops are budding right onto the right-of-way of the railroad tracks. And folks are standing in the open under light poles on gravel. So it's, keeps on going. MISTIP, I've mentioned that before. The Washington County Coordinating Committee is having a retreat in December to dig deep into MISTIP. Mike McCarthy would be a very busy guy, getting everyone up to speed on the projects that Tuolton would like to see. And ideally, at least we get one or two. We'll, we'll see what happens after the projects are vetted. Big subject, good discussion, was the JPAC meeting that's upcoming and the Joe Buck Amendment. The Joe Buck Amendment. So Clackamas County has requested that the RMPP project and ODOT be separated out of the RTP. They only wanna fund the planning and not the implementation. They object to it. It got pretty heated, I guess, at MPAC about that. We discussed it at Washington County Coordinating Committee. Based on the advice of the TAC, the Technical Advisory to Staff folks, that basically, you know, Washington County should vote in favor, Washington County cities should vote in favor, basically pinching their nose that this isn't the greatest RTP. We look forward to amendments, but at the JPAC meeting, there's gonna be the actual RTP plan and then voting on amendments. And Clackamas County is very insistent on splitting that project out. The controversy was, ODOT wasn't even in the room for that when they proposed that amendment. And there is a fear of how can it, MPAC, that forcibly remove a project from another agency that's in the RTP? And what precedent are we setting? Even though, you know, the feelings of Clackamas County on tolling. So it's gonna be an interesting JPAC meeting. If you're up early, you might wanna watch it. It's gonna be pretty heated. And then, mentioned, Council Hillier mentioned it, just put it on your calendar, December thirteenth, from five to seven, the Special Subcommittee on Transportation will be in the Licaswego, Wilsonville, Tuolton area for a public hearing on tolling. We don't have a location yet because they're anticipating a very big crowd. And the places that could accommodate it are Licaswego School District and TTSD, but they're all doing their holiday stuff at that time. So there's a lack of availability. I got an email earlier today from Dr. Sue saying they're gonna look at other, like, gyms and common areas inside the schools, as is Licaswego. So TBD on where it's gonna be held. December second, which is a Saturday, the West Lynn, River Grove, Oregon City Meeting will be held. And that might be a good one if you wanna watch it or hopefully it's streaming, or go to get a heads up on what we're gonna see. Okay, I'm, I'm gonna go because I wanna see what's gonna happen here and get it. It's, theirs is ten to noon on Saturday, I believe. It's a Saturday. They have, everyone's scrambling to find a spot because no one really has a facility. Oh, come here. At least it's at, in the evening, not in the morning when no one could make it. So that's it for me. It's late. I just wanna wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. And do I have a motion? Motion second, voted. Have a good evening, everyone. This city council meeting is adjourned.